And you don't have to give your address. And then it's five minutes and the city attorney keeps time, I don't.
I know. We didn't call each other.
So Ms. Hecker, Donna Hecker is going to go first, then Tom Marshall. And I don't know, and then we've got other people on the agenda for presentations. So can we ask Ms. Hecker?
Hi, thank you. My name is Donna Hecker. I'm there as president of Walk by Frankfurt. And I just wanted to say that it's really exciting times to be in Frankfurt. I know the city commission is going to be considering a resolution in support of a bike lane project on US 60. There's some wonderful sidewalk repair work going on on East Main Street next to the, um, next to Green Hill Cemetery. And I know that there's a sidewalk master plan presentation that's coming up. So it's exciting times. Thank you all for all the hard work they're doing. And it's appreciated by many of us. Thanks.
Well, thank you all too for putting in your-
Doing all the work.
... kind of time. Um, Tom Marshall?
My name's Tom Marshall. Uh, I live over in the South Frankfurt Historic District. And I received an email, uh, I guess from some of the people of the neighborhood association about something that was going to be discussed tonight in terms of the regulations regarding the Historic District. And it's not so much that I want to make comments, as it is, I'm curious about the process, uh, some of the issues that I'd like to address so that we understand fully what is being proposed and how it's going to be implemented. The map that was made a part of this, and I assume is part of it, staff has, has some areas in South Frankfurt that have, uh, that are dark colored and some rules will apply to them, I guess, or they won't apply to them. They'll apply to everyone else who's light colored, the majority of those areas. Uh, I'm curious as to why some of the people on my block are, you know, have this black shading and the rest of us have got the white shading. And what does that mean, uh, for the property owners? So if somebody could address that, if you're going to speak right now, I'd appreciate it. Uh, like the presentation today, uh, as I said before, what are the consequences and results of being one classification or another? Then there's some discussion, uh, in the pros in here about a, some consultants and whether or not if we're going to have a grant, whether, are we going to follow a certain set of consultants in terms of what's going to be required? Uh, if we say no, we're not going to go that route, then, uh, what are the consequences for the neighborhood if we go that route? Which rules apply? I'm assuming, and I may be wrong, from the verbiage that I've seen, that if we stick with whatever the staff report is, that means that we're not going to the federal consultants or state consultants, whoever the consultants are. And that the recommendations would be much as are in the, uh, the draft that I have seen. Yeah, I'd like to have it discussed as to whether that's correct or incorrect. Uh, if these consultants are used, uh, then what is it that we can expect that they will be doing in terms of the draft that is different than the ones that have been made by staff or whoever, uh, made the proposal that, uh, the council would be looking at in this draft one time? So that's it. Thank you.
Just so now, uh, we will be having a presentation. So if your answers, um, if those questions aren't answered, then we'll make sure we get those. Any other citizen comments?
Hi.
Okay.
My name's Jen Spengler Williamson. I live at 407 Walking Street. I'm a, um, a resident in the Special Historic District. Um, I'm an architect who practices in Frankfurt and I also work for the Kentucky Heritage Council, just to cover all the bases. Um, I came to hear the discussion and participate in the discussion about the changes. Um, I do have concerns about the changes. I think the biggest concern that I wanted to express is that we need to, if we're, if we're going to have this discussion, we need to be sure that it is done in a context that's open enough to the public. So all of the property owners who are in the districts that are being affected are clearly aware of the nature of the changes. Um, I'm not sure the current draft, there was an earlier draft that was introduced around in the spring, and I shared some comments with planning director on those. Um, so those have been shared. I don't know if that's the current draft or if there's been modifications made to that draft. But the draft that I saw in the spring had changes that, um, really get to zoning issues even beyond historic preservation, including the allowance of uses by right in, um, in our special historic and special capital districts that are currently required to go through a public hearing process, um, such as having mixed use retail in special historic streets like Watson Court or the end of Wilkinson, which is really primarily residential, really exclusively residential. Also, the five, six, seven hundred block Shelby Street could have a restaurant, um, a five, uh, permit and not go through a public hearing. Uh, so with, with the draft revisions that have been there. And there's a pretty drastic entitlement for an addition up to 40% of the square footage of the building, which would, um, with, in the language that I saw, or at least in the draft I saw, I couldn't see that it distinguished that this would be to the rear of the structure. Um, I don't know if, if someone came in with wanting to do a second story addition that was 40% of the ground floor area, if that would be something then that the city staff would have to interpret, or if it would go to a review board, or what the nature of that is. But I think that these are all pretty big and drastic changes from the current zoning and the process should be, um, a public discussion with the citizens of Frankfurt.
Great, thank you. Did somebody else have their? Let's see. Okay. Thank you all. And, uh, again, uh, this is just discussion, this is on here for discussion purposes. And I know, and after the presentation, if that makes other questions pop up on people's minds, just feel free to grab one of us or call us or email us if you want to, and we'll make sure we get adequate, um, responses to everybody, unless the commission has other, you know, thoughts.
I think the only thing I would add is there's a whole lot more discussion to go besides tonight. And with feeling.
Thank you. Um, and the next thing too, uh, because we have several different presentations, we were going to, uh, I know that, um, some of our folks need to get out of here to get to other meetings. So at this point, since, um, we did ask some folks that need to leave, can we, is any objection to doing historic regulations presentation by our staff on that since timely topic with the questions too, that might answer questions too? Then, um, I guess Mr. Mueller is going to make the presentation. Any other staff that you have that, that you need to introduce, uh, please do so.
Would you like me to answer the citizen comments questions first?
Sure, please.
Um, the map that you were referring to, that was in the handout, um, the city, over the past four years, each year, we were luckily awarded a grant by the CLG to hire a professional consultant to do a survey of different parts of South Frankfurt. And we did four different areas, which encompassed the entire South Frankfurt boundary, and actually expanded the national historic district boundary by incorporating more properties as contributing in that area. Those consultants each year identified through historic regulations and requirements, whether the structure of the property was contributing or not contributing. That's where the criteria came from. It was evaluated by the Heritage Council and ultimately supported. They gave us that in digital format called GIS with a layer, and I just made a map of it showing all the, that's where the dark areas came from. If the, the city has applied for a grant, we did, the city did not approve the funding of that grant. They allowed staff to submit for the grant, and if awarded, we would then determine whether or not we would fund it and go forth with that. And that's where we're at now. We did get word that we have been approved, um, and that grant is to hire consultants to create three historic guideline, preservation guidelines for our three separate historic zoning districts. Um, if the city commission chooses to go that direction, I'm assuming the staff work will kind of cease, be handed off. The citizen survey would be provided to the consultant. Hiring a consultant is a, uh, four month process minimum. We have to do an advertisement, go through the bids, and select the company, negotiate with them, and then hire them, and get them approved with the city commission. So that's going to take some time to go through. A year ago, we decided not to apply and have staff work on them. Um, so we've been working on them. And then priorities was altered through the year, and then it was regenerated, so we've been working on them again. And that's how, where we're at. If a consultant is hired, on your question, what, what's the process and how's that going to work? Again, I would assume we've given them the citizen surveys that we provided. They would go through what we have, go through what the Heritage Council's guidelines are for the grant, and out of their professional, um, experience and professionalism, they would provide us with a draft based on citizen comments with additional public meetings to get additional comments. Regardless, I'm going to go over here in just a second, over the actual process for any amendments. And I think that will give you some more detail. Um, the draft the staff has, it's a, it's a starting point. We took multiple elements. We took the survey that was mailed out, which was a really good response, I thought, and a lot of good comments. On the email I got from Jen, uh, in the spring, we did incorporate most of her comments and concerns. A lot, uh, throughout most of it, a lot of it didn't get finalized, uh, but we went ahead and moved forward to a zoning update committee meeting in May of this year, just to get that process going. But for the most part, we did address those concerns. And I got a new email from her that I'm, uh, we're replying back to her on those comments as well. So we, in order to have a meeting, you have to have a starting point. Starting point, you have to have regulations. Staff had direction from city commission. We had a survey. We had a form code that had a lot of public input that didn't get finalized, but it had a lot of elements in it that had some support. I tried to take those elements. We also had nineteen eighty-seven-ish guidelines that were approved by the city but never formally adopted. They were used by staff. This document got lost for years, yet staff was still applying, some staff was applying the regulations of this, uh, until 2002. So I incorporated all those elements and tried to roll it into a, what I understood my direction from commission was and where we wanted to go. Um, the premise is to try to make more uses available, higher values of property, maintain historic preservation, um, but not to be strict guidelines and that there should be different criteria for each zoning district that we have. The commercial, central business, special historic, corners of celebrities, and South Frankfurt, special capital. So if I may, I'm just going to jump in. This is a very short presentation. I'm trying to keep this down to ten minutes. I could spend eight hours on this, um, going line by line. But I'm going to try to, try to get to ten minutes. And this is only information that wasn't in the handout that I mailed to you all. I'm going to overview the process. But this is generally when a text amendment is proposed and prepared by staff or the commission or the planning commission, they have to go to the zoning update committee. They are members of the planning commission. They review it, they amend it, and they forward to planning commission. Planning commission holds the actual public hearing. All zoning update committee meetings are public. Publicly allowed to come, they're allowed to speak. The planning commission holds the official public hearing, which is required by statute. They either recommend to the city commission approval or denial. And at times, they'll send it back to the zoning update committee. But typically, it doesn't leave the zoning update committee until the majority of those folks, actually, it doesn't leave that committee until the majority of the committee says, send to the floor. Lastly, all text amendments, then they go to the city commission for a first and second reading, and ultimate approval or denial is held by the city commission on all text amendments to zoning regulations. As far as historic preservation regulations, out of the box, normal process, we did a citizen survey. We took those results. We had a zoning update committee meeting, uh, and we're now to invite all ARB members to participate in those, have a joint meeting. Uh, and they anticipate, I anticipate that'll take four to six meetings for them to fully understand and make amendments to the starting point draft that we have now. Then it goes back, then we will have once we, so we all understand what the regulations say, and there's elements that are dramatically no, we don't want, and yes, we do want, then I feel it's important, important to have a public meeting so they're informed and they can provide comments. Then it will go back to the zoning update committee, hopefully for just one or two meetings, and then to the planning commission and the city commission. That's the process that we have laid out, or that I have laid out.
So Gary, let me ask, interrupt real quick. So you're, you're saying that this is probably another year?
Yes. I'd say a good, uh, six to eight months before it's at the planning commission for sure.
Right.
And that's going through it, meeting regularly. The zoning update committee is regularly scheduled quarterly. We're going to have to meet every month to get that through the process. And they're okay with that. They've talked about it. Overview, this is exactly from the report that I provided you all. Quick highlights, Article seventeen is where all of our historic preservation ordinance is, all of the guidelines and requirements. There's numerous sections that say you should do this, staff should encourage, we do encourage, and there's some elements that say you shall do. Shall and is regulatory, should, encourage is not regulatory. So I took the regulatory sections out and put it into the zoning district. That was the first dra, dramatic change. Uh, the Heritage Council prefers it all in one ordinance, not scattered throughout the code. The purpose, I thought, was if someone's in CD, you give them one document and they have that, everything is there. If they don't meet those guidelines or can't meet those, those requirements, not guidelines, if they can't meet the requirements, then they use the attached guidelines. That's where we were headed. Forty percent building administrative approval. The survey did indicate all new construction should go to ARB. There wasn't a question on the survey about additions or minor additions or major additions. The form code had a forty percent rule, so I chose forty percent as a discussion point. We had to have a number in order to have discussion. So I took upon myself to use forty percent of a, if you build up to forty percent and it meets the requirements, then it should be initially approved. If it doesn't, then it goes to our district review board for reviewing. Any project that wants state tax credits, city loan grant programs, any type of federal funding of any kind, has to meet all guidelines, not just requirements, but all guidelines. We haven't, so that's kind of the difference in that aspect also. Contributing, non-contributing, if you're non-contributing, you are looked at differently. Currently in our process, you're looked at differently. We typically provide more administrative approvals on non-contributing properties, especially if you have a, a non-contributing shed in the back. You can shut down administratively. That has been the practice. South Frankfurt is a lot different. I'll get there in a second. Setbacks ought to be determined by staff, so we've changed it. So that setbacks, it's an average of the block that you sit on, not an average of the whole district, but the average that you sit in, is what was suggested. So that's how we got to where we are. The last one, the elements not visible from public sidewalk are not required matching existing materials. That was part of the eighty-seven document, and it actually has illustrations of how you determine what's visible from the street. Instead of the street, I show sidewalk. But it's kind of a merge of all areas that I thought we were out, that our staff was directed to go towards. So in central business, we did a summary for each of three districts. If you want me to go through them, I can, otherwise, I'll, we can just answer questions at the end of the powerpoint presentation. But I have all three sections on here, um, that were provided. Special historic, um, we did change, um, duplexes would be allowed by right, um, but if it's detached, it requires a conditional use permit. And there's limitations on the size of the, the size. That's in the special historic district. In special capital, currently, then you request a conditional use, which means a public meeting to our district review board. If you want a restaurant of three thousand square feet or le, uh, fifteen hundred square feet or less, or if you own a professional office of three thousand square feet or less. I'm not aware of any of them that have been denied. We've never had a restaurant proposed, to my recollection. No one's ever asked for one larger. And the offices that have come in, I can't recall one that's been denied, but there may have been one in the past few years, if I recall. Uh, we do have conditions for those agreements. So the only way I knew to assist in the uses was to get your less than three thousand and fifteen hundred square feet based on the use, it's approved by right. Duplexes are approved by right. If it's larger than that, then you get a conditional use permit with our district review board. You still have to meet all the car, criteria of the zoning regulations, but that, that was the only way I knew how to add uses, make things a little easier for owners, an We carried the forty percent rule for all three districts. Roof materials is an important one. There was a lot of discussion in special capital district a couple of years ago about a metal roof and how, why the ridges should be. And you can go to Lowe's and buy a metal roof prefabbed, but it's like an eight inch ridge and it looks like a storage shed ridge and it shouldn't be on a house. So I did a lot of research on this, actually, and found a lot of documentation, and fifteen inch seems to be the most appropriate and the most applied throughout historic preservation. So I added that as if you're a fifteen inch ridge to ridge, it should be initially approved without having to go to the board. And those that work fifteen inches or greater have been approved. So those are, there are some rationales of why I proposed some of the ones I have in there. Handicap ramps, we typically try to approve those by right without having to go to the board because it's a limited special need. Uh, the ones that are in the right of way had to get public works approval, but otherwise, we try to let those folks go through the process as quickly as possible without having it be held up, unless it's a multi-supplementary concoction of some sort. But typically, it's a very short minimum ramp, um, and they're done by nonprofits to help out the individual also. And we don't charge a fee for those. So the options and considerations to grant, we kind of touched on. Right now, we've been awarded the grant to hire a consultant to prepare three historic design guidelines and regulations for our three historic districts. The cost to the city is seven thousand eight hundred dollars plus time effort. Financially, that's the cost. Unless the bids come in higher, then we'll have to ask for more money. But per the grant, that was the match. Again, the commission hasn't approved the funding officially. It was in my proposed budget, which the budget has been approved, but it hasn't been officially designated for that sole purpose. So we'll have to go to the city commission to get that approved, if that's the route we want to go. If we, and the Heritage Council has informed me, or unofficially, if we use my version and we hire consultants, tell them to finish my version, um, they wouldn't fund it because it's too far out of the preservation intent and desires and too lax. And it's where we're, we're at that draft.
Your version?
But that was unofficially.
Pretty bad.
Means a lot. Means a lot. But there would be public meetings and public discussions if we do hire a consultant who goes through that process. Either way, there's public input needed and encouraged. Um, at that same meeting that I had with the Heritage Council, I threw out a out-of-the-box thought, and that was, let's, what if we keep the regulations we have, we hire consultants, and we use their best historic preservation guidelines and experience and review the survey and the needs of the Frankfurt, make it a Frankfurt plan? But we also rezone some of the properties in our community out of the local historic district. You leave the national district intact, you reason, like Paul Sawyer Drive is not locally zoned historic, it's in a historic district. If the owners choose to apply for tax credits and choose to follow all the historic preparations, they still get the tax credit. No. But they're not mandated to go to ARB for anything, and they can replace every window tomorrow with any window that they want, any size of the door, as long as that meets building code versus zoning regulations. So the thought was, maybe we should, could come up with an idea. I did not have my map with me at the time. I had an idea. We discussed the idea. They kind of liked the idea better than current versions of the regulations I drafted. But what properties, what areas, all need to be further discussed and continue that meeting conversation, which we have not had the opportunity to. If we go this route, I would encourage we have a couple of public meetings with the owners of the areas who are involved, but invite all the public too, and see if there's an interest that they want to be taken out and rezoned or not. We may have some that want to stay in, we may have some that are outside the area that want to come out. I don't know. But from that input, it would be a good starting point to see if this is a process, should the commission think this is a good idea. But it would be a way to keep a high integrity of our historic preservation guidelines, emphasizing the preservation side versus the, uh, what you can't see from the street, keep it on all four sides preserved. But also allow areas of South Frankfurt to not have to follow all of the historic guidelines, actually not require any of the historic guidelines. Most of Second Street is not historically local district. Paul Sawyer, there's several areas that are not. And again, the dark shaded areas, per consultants are non-contributing, meaning they do not contribute to historic fabric character, their, their property is not part of it. If you dramatically change that property, it could worsen the feel or it can improve the feel. But either way, its current state is not contributing, so it's not helping the situation, helping the heritage or influencing the heritage. I hope I stated that right. Questions, comments, directions? One, do we proceed with the draft and the process? Two, do we suspend our efforts right now, authorize the grant, hire consultants, and let them do their best professional preparation? Third, regardless of number one and two, do we want to conduct a public meeting, have some citizen input on do they want to be zoned out of the local historic district? In the nineties, late nineties, early, like ninety-nine, there was an area of Miro and Clinton that the city tried to rezone to historic and that was not very successful. The city has gone, tried to rezone properties to historic without much luck. I'm not aware of us going backwards. I don't think we've ever gone backwards. We have allowed, I believe it's been four property owners to rezone out of a historic local district through their request. So that is an out-of-the-box thought to try to consider. And I don't, for the public's sake, I don't anticipate an actual conclusion this evening of any of my ideas or thoughts or questions or comments, because I was just asked to give an update on where we're at. Hoping tonight's focus is, yes, staff can head in the right direction, or I missed the boat completely and we need to go forth with the grant. One of the reasons you did apply or did apply for the grant, authorize us to apply for the grant, was to free up staff so we could work on our projects. So I have-
Any questions for the venue director? Thank you, by the way.
Thank you. And I've got a couple of extras of the powerpoint, if anybody wants.
I'm sure those are also available-
I'm sure those are also available electronically if someone wants copies.
First of all, I want to thank you for all, because I had wrote down questions based on some information that was sent and you just clarified all those. You know, we definitely need to get to number three, the public meeting concerns, because there's too many concerns right now.
Yours and Tom's.
Yeah, to move forward at all. As far as that, it appears the direction went at first, that doesn't seem like it's going to be a good idea. And this is just opinion based on what you're giving, you know, it sounded good at the time. Now, that number two, I want to make sure I understand that. If we suspend and utilize grants after hiring consultants, that's not talking about, is that talking about this 78 commission fund?
Yes, $7,800. That's our match.
Okay. So that first, that number one is just that draft that you were talking about with all the changes, that's getting all the questions?
Yes. And we keep going, having public meetings, going to the zoning update until they're comfortable, then having a public meeting for information and education and comments, going back to the zoning committee, planning commission, city commission.
I'd like the other version.
The consultant version.
Right. Because I think it's going to take a while. And I think we need, this is so important, and I'm not a historic preservation expert, you know, but we have people that are. And I really appreciate the information that's flowing because, you know, it makes sense. And the people that are impacted most need to be the ones that, you know, talk about these changes. I mean, we can do it from a legislative body, but it's better that, you know, that this is one that comes from the ground up. Make sure we at least hit the majority of the stuff correctly, because nothing's going to be perfect. There's always going to be somebody that don't want something, but the majority of the stuff, we can be hit. But thank you on your staff.
Got a narrow question and then I guess a follow-up to Commissioner Haines. On the special historic district, maximum density of 14 units per acre for multifamily uses. Where does that number come from?
I believe it currently requires a multifamily to follow the RL district and RL has that density in, I thought it was something. If I'm not mistaken, that's where that came.
You know, I guess February or March of 2013, we talked about how to, I know it's, I start laughing thinking about it too.
No, I'm sorry.
We talked about how that one of the challenges facing the downtown was the housing stock. And like when I campaigned, it seemed like about every third or every fourth house was in bad shape. And so how do you, how do you improve that situation? So the hope was that through lessening some of the requirements, you would give people incentives to do more with their property, make it look better, and attract capital and attract new people to the downtown so that we would have a better looking place. Well, I think that's sort of what you tried to do with that. And you said it better than I did. But that was sort of what we gave you to do and you did it. I would have liked it a little quicker, but you did it. And I know we had a lot of hoops to go through. I still believe that there is a way, you know, if you read your proposal and you read the proposal representing the Heritage Commission, I feel like I'm on two different planets. That's how different they are. I think if you take the consultant approach, you will get everything that we currently have and you will not solve the problem. Because what will happen is we will not enforce it. The ARB will attempt to enforce it and selectively do it. We'll have people repair their things on the weekend so they don't have to make, do the thing. And then you'll say to somebody that's told, well, you can't use this part of your building because you don't have an alley. And they'll say, what about the four buildings across the street that do it, that do have an alley, don't have an alley either? And they'll say, well, I guess they were grandfathered in. The truth was, they probably weren't. They just did it. Our current system won't work, in my judgment. So I would lean toward continuing with number one, but I don't know enough yet. This is a complicated document and process. And Commissioner Hedin is not here, who I know has a lot of interest in this. So even though I was a little different than Commissioner Haines, the part that I'm on the same page with is we need public comment. And even though I believe the people that are against, that are for softening regulation and for softening the power of the ARB, most of them will not come because they're fearful that if they do come, that A, that A, it might have adverse consequences, or B, no offense to any of those people, but they may be a lot of the weekend people that did their stuff on the weekend. So they probably don't want to make that widely known. So, you know, laws that aren't enforced and regulations that aren't enforced have no merit. After a while, if there's enough people that don't follow them, that's, that's what is created. I think that's what we have. But I think that we need to, all of us study it, because I could change my mind, this is, like I said, it's very complicated. I believe that we need to have time to adjust the things that we've been told tonight, ask questions between now and the next work session, and then maybe at the next work session, have a, have a period of time where we can have the public come in and we, and we have a broader debate over maybe which direction to go. Because I'm not prepared, even though I lean toward number one, and Commissioner Haines leans toward or is for number two, I'm not prepared to give any direction yet until I know more. And I sure don't want to do it on something this big without one of the members of the commission here.
Can I follow up? I just want to follow up on one thing that was summarized, that I don't know if this is David July, this is Vicki?
Yes.
To summarize, we have concerns about the proposed changes and it is our opinion that they are contrary to your certified local government agreement with our office. That is kind of huge. If that is actually the case, you know, that's what I said, we've searched parts and it does seem like we got such a disconnect with that.
I have reviewed that letter today and the, there's a couple of areas that I think I know where they're coming from, but I haven't spoken with Vicki and she's not available for another two weeks. I believe she's out of the office. A couple of the concerns are current regulations that we already have. Allowing by right to buy themselves, Frankford, is against all their CLG normal standards, but it's a law that's already existed today. We're not changing that as far as making that more strict. We're allowing it, we're not making it less, we're not making it more, and we're just leaving it alone. And if we're changing it, the preference would be to change it back toward historic preservation version and using that as one example. The 40% rule of building, I think, was an issue. And there was one in there about, I highlighted, I did want to. The one over, allowing one-over-one statues to replace existing historic configurations is inappropriate. That's not a change, that's current today. If you have a six window, sixteen window over sixteen window, today is wood, today, you can go back with a wood window, one solid piece of window on top, one on the box, one pane to one pane, one to one. By right, I sign off today, no board, no ARB, wood to wood. This document on the tenses, that's inappropriate. That's, that's there today. When I, so there needs to be some discussion on where they're coming from, on where we're at. If it's current regulation, we're not changing it, we're not making it any more. I did bring up as a fallback, why don't we just go back to the adopted, paid-for by Heritage Council, 1985 version? And this is less restrictive than even my version. So they weren't keen with that either, and she didn't think this could meet any of the agreements either. But it was funded and paid for and approved by our body. So I know, I can't answer your question fully, but that's the best way I can answer your question. I think we're going to be okay. The agreement was attached, it's pretty vague on the city's agreement side, I think. And it could be argued easily on either side with the help of an attorney, I think. But I don't want to diminish the historic preservation, it's a very important quality of our city. It's a huge draw of people to our town and people that want to live here on a regular basis.
I agree with that. I don't either. I think there's a way to marry these two things. I've thought that from the beginning. But it appears that, like I said, you look like, you feel like when you read those two documents, that you're on two different planets. And, and I, and what we've been doing doesn't work. Now, and I, and I would, and I think there's plenty of data to demonstrate that. But I think that this needs more talk and more discussion. And just the comments you just made just now would give even more support for the fact that we're not ready to give a direction, because you just highlighted three or four things that might not be right. And you just looked at it today.
Yes, my apologies, please.
And my guess is that the other side is going to be looking and thinking about the things you've just said and be coming up with things based on that.
Sometimes it feels that way.
Yeah, so that's, I would, whatever the, if the commission's got a sense of the best way for us to, to move forward as far as discussing and going over this further and having more public thing, and how would that fit in with the things you were talking about with the different stages? It's almost like we need maybe a stage before that, so you get direction, so you know which process to go through, correct?
Yes. I would ask, if it's all right, if staff goes ahead and prepares an RFP and six bids for consultants, so we actually have numbers, that doesn't cost anything, and it doesn't delay the project, should you choose one versus two? But if not, we don't have to. But it gets us ahead of the game if number two's chosen and it, but that's solely up to you.
Was there any objection to that? And it's not going to obligate us to anything, it's just an opportunity to stay on a schedule? And it certainly is not going to be rushed?
No.
Just so the public knows, just the fact that the staff may put in an RFP doesn't mean that that's the way we're going. It just means it's a step that's in place if needed.
Want to wait another month or two, that's fine.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with what the mayor has said and you've said it, because that doesn't obligate you to that position. I, I'd like to hear what everybody thinks about the, the best way to, is it the next work session that we discuss it some more or get some more comments in here? And then from there, hope to give direction if we're ready? Is that the way to go?
Well, it seems that, I don't think anybody feels completely at ease tonight making the decision. If, since there's no objection, we'll just take initiation, make sure the public has information. If there are people that want copies of this presentation, make sure that we put that out. I guess we could put it on our website.
It'll be on our website, our department website.
People can download it. And if people have trouble with that, they can contact Planning Department or City Manager's Office directly. And we will make sure that everybody gets information and questions answered. And it's going to be a process that will take a lot of steps, but we will make sure that we don't rush into changes that are this big. And I see you for that. So is that okay?
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Williams, did you want to add one more thing?
I just had a question to know. Because I think, is there any update committee meeting that was scheduled for June that the discussion was not completed from the agenda? Is it, is this scheduled for any upcoming, is there any update committee meeting?
Do you know?
I'm just trying to.
No.
Because I, this meeting also was a little, we heard about it at the first of July, so I didn't, it was short to know that. And it, I don't think it went from a meeting of eight committee in June, so I just wanted to know if it's out there on the horizon, just to maybe make a discussion in the work session.
Yes, if I may. In the zoning committee that we had, after that was concluded, I told them what we were likely going to do. And then I informed them our last meeting in June, that as far as the historic preservation regulations, they're off the table until I get some clear direction from the commission. What we did do in June is we processed changes to the professional office district and the central general commercial district for those properties on Second Street and made changes. And they have supported those. And those are going to the planning commission for a public hearing in August. Those were the only two things that were discussed in June, other than I let them know that we're going to hold off until we get some letter of direction about the grant, do we do the grant, do we not do the grant, because that affects everything that's part of our government.
So the next work session that's going to be discussed, is that next week or is that?
Second Monday in August.
So it'll be a long time and then I think everyone, everyone wants to review things and make sure that we all know what we're discussing. As Commissioner said, we didn't get this until first of July as well.
One last one, sorry. Is the current draft available on the web as the previous draft was? Is that something that's going to be available for, for us to look at before the August meeting? That you made some revisions?
I had not put it on the web because this, I wanted to wait till the zoning committee was comfortable before I made it public, public for public input. Now, it was the only reason why I didn't put it out there. I have no problem emailing it to anyone who would like a copy of it.
I guess it would just be you have a question about how it plays into the discussion you all have planned out. I'd like a copy of it, if it's pertinent to the discussion in August.
Thank you, thank you very much and all the staff you worked on. For chairing, Mr. David Bucha was here. Thank you for being here. Let's see, I don't know, I'm sure, I guess one of the next items was to mention Commissioner Haines' birthday again?
Not today?
That was, that was. That was just added to the agenda.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. We'll be moving along.
Thank you so much. And you can still run, do you run the 400?
No, I ran 100 and longer, shorter.
You still zero?
The whole short distance.
Not wind aided either. Thank you all. Okay. Main society?
Mr. Moore?
What was that?
Mr. Moore?
There's been a request, and we, we do that one first, but because of, some folks had to leave, but then we did.
So which one we doing?
We also might have requested that he made.
Oh, he made the sound, okay.
Well, you know what? I think that's true. Is there, can, if there's no objection, then.
Do pedestrians?
We can do the pedestrian first.
So I think I walk in quicker.
I think I walk in quicker? We have Selis Wilder. I don't know if you're also going to make the presentation with her, but if you're interested. And thank, and also, just for those that don't know.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilder was a former member of the commission, so we thank you for continuing to provide service to the community.
Right. So I know you've got a lot on the agenda today, so you're going to need to pick up more than a couple of minutes of your time. As you're aware, the Franklin County Health Department was awarded a healthy communities grant from the Kentucky Department for Public Health to develop a pedestrian master plan for the city. And again, as you know, our process involved months of collecting community input and reaching out in various ways to determine which potential, which routes would be most popular within the community for new sidewalk development. We, we considered dozens of streets and, and weeded out the most, the most popular and the least controversial and, and put together an initial draft based purely on that community input and then had city staff, particularly the public works department, review, review that list to weed, you know, to further weed the list down to take out streets that presented feasibility challenges, particularly in regards to engineering and running. And as a result, we came up with this, the actually a master plan. We have extra copies here for, for anybody else in the room who would like to see it. But it's essentially just a list of seven streets that we, that we recommend for, for new sidewalk development. And we're requesting that the city, that the city consider adopting this plan, much like was done with the, the cyclist pedestrian plan that was. was done with the, the cyclist pedestrian plan that was presented by Walk By Frankfurt a number of years ago. The city's support of the plan would be non-binding, it wouldn't entail the commitment of any funds, it would just kind of provide a guiding document that reflects the community's wishes, balance against feasibility concerns, so as the city finishes the Shinkle Lane Project, which is number one, excuse me, which is number one on this list, that, you know, this question doesn't have to get asked every time, so that it can just be a kind of comprehensive guiding document. And I would, I would just add that the, I think, one of the real values to the city of this plan, and just that, as you all know, when applying for, for grants, for infrastructure development, et cetera, I mean, you're much more likely to, planning authorities are much more likely to award a grant if it's part of a formal adopted plan. And so we hope this provides that value to you. And we're really pleased with the plan. It's just seven streets, you'd think that somebody could have come up with this over a weekend, but a lot of thought went into the streets, and, and we're really confident that this plan reflects the, reflects the wishes of the community, it'll be very doable for the city, and we're hoping that it'll be very easy for, for the community and for staff and for you all to support. We, this is a grant funded project, and so we, we are our final report to the Kentucky Department for Public Health at, at the end of this month. So it's, it's not essential, if you all need more time to consider or review this, but if possible, we're requesting that, that this can be considered at your voting meeting this month, so that we can hopefully have a, kind of a final outcome to report back to the Franklin County Department for, or to the Kentucky Department for Public Health. Included in the, in the packets you got is just a letter of addendum with just additional information, some background on the plan, some additional data, including some streets that were identified by the community, which we'll candidates for a care, and some routes that are outside the city and the county, et cetera. Just some extra information, and we didn't want to let that go to waste. Thank you very much for your consideration. If you all have any questions, we have representatives from the Public Health Department here as well, and, and other planning team members in the room include Tommy Haynes, who is a member of the planning team, and Britten Skinner representing the EPH, and Donna Hedger representing Walk By Frankfurt. And we're happy to answer any questions now or over the next couple weeks.
Good. Thank you. All right. The sidewalk on the Metta View, Westwood, Bondrick, Kings Daughter Drive, how does that, I'm terrible at maps.
Sure.
But I assume this is up here by the Wendy's on the two here?
So this is...
This where the stoplight is?
This is, this is where Sonic and Speedway are, right there with the, uh, right there where that number three is. So the Wendy's would be, would be there.
Right in here, okay.
This is essentially, and, and really, there's a, there's another section in that that probably should have been highlighted as well. But essentially, that just provides pedestrian access.
So is the sidewalk on both sides on Metta View?
That's, that's not determined, whether or not the sidewalk would be on one side or both sides of the street. For my purposes, one side would be, you know, perfectly fine, because in many cases, that's, that's going to be a lot more feasible. But really, that, and that, and that was one, actually, that the planning, that was a route that the planning team didn't identify, that was identified by the community. And a lot of folks brought that up, a desire for pedestrian access to the various schools in that area, and of course, to the hospital and to the senior center.
I was just asking, because Metta View's, a lot, some of those lots are pretty small in the, their front lots, so I was asking. And I have one other question. Um, under, in number five, does Comanche, doesn't it just have one AM?
That might be, that might be a tactic.
You might want to look at that. I'm not sure, but I, I grew up in Indian Hills, and I think Comanche's maybe got one AM. I checked it, because if you're going to be passing this out, Comanche's got one, but I could be wrong.
You may be right.
That's enough, that's all I got.
Spell checked it in case I...
I like to be wrong, I'm not that good at it, but it looks wrong.
Yeah, well, thanks to all the work that you all did and the input that you got from the public survey, took a lot of work, it's hopefully the first step in getting some new sidewalks for these areas and making it safer and more pedestrian traveling for folks. I believe the city attorney, did you want to ask?
Just one question, and, and this relates to Rebecca Hall, and then is there's the, the sidewalks for school grants that we've been working on, is that incorporated in this as well?
I think that, that number two in particular certainly represents an opportunity for a, for a safe route to school.
I could actually kind of comment on that a little bit. Specifically, the ones you have listed, coming in their hierarchy. Number one, today, we've got about 20% of the bill, by the end of this fiscal year, we'll have another 50 or 60% completed a bit. It'll be almost, over a few hundred feet of 421. Number two is a good chunk of a set of currently, let's say designed, going up RQs for a safe route to school grant, or a chunk of number two. So your top two on your list are the ones we're actively pursuing right now anyway.
That's great, and we would hope that the adoption of this plan would, would help, would help get that grant, the safe route to school.
If you'd like to add, Selas, number three on the list, Louisville Road, west of Highway 127, state indicated that they are going to extend that sidewalk to State Police Headquarters on Downs.
That's really great.
Other US 60 project.
And of course, the, the first item on the list being the Shinkle Lane Project, that was elevated after, after talking with, with city staff. It made a lot of sense, that was elevated to the top of the priority list to reflect the fact that that project is underway and already is, completing that project is obviously a top priority for the city before moving on to any other projects.
That's great.
I just wanted to add, first of all, I wanted, thank Selas for the leadership and the staff put together, and then looking at the sheet where I see 279 community members completed the survey, you know, to get people to complete a survey about a sidewalk, you know, you know, that's no easy task, and the way that went about, and you all having the computers there, the people going, and even had the ones that are not computer savvy to be able to handwrite theirs, you know, that's something that, you know, of course, you know, city staff, they didn't have to be, there's somebody to check it on, and that's information now that we have as historic, you know, it can be part of any plan that we're talking about. So thank you, thank you all very much.
Our pleasure, and thank you for helping. Great. Thanks, thanks, guys.
All right, now, Humane Society, and we have Mr. Sam Marcus here, we didn't even have to bring him in to answer questions.
I just...
So we have city solicitor, William Marcus.
Sure.
I had sent a, a letter to Tim dated July the 8th, that I think he forwarded on to you all concerning this issue, and there were basically what I consider a couple of components to the issue to be addressed with respect to Franklin County Humane Society. First of all, is the contract, and I did include an updated contract that is a draft, of course, that Steve Dawson, Mark Wilfoyle, and I met and discussed. And our recommendation is that, consistent with the consumer price index increase, that the annual payment to the Humane Society be increased to $60,000 a year. And then, we also propose that the contract be a, a five-year contract with the right to renew it thereafter for an additional one, five-year terms, unless either party terminates the contract upon 60 days written notice. And then I would point out that this contract form is very similar to what the county has right now, because I just felt like it would make sense for the, for the Humane Society's contract with the city to be similar to the county, since we're both requesting about the same services. I don't know what you all want to do with respect to the contract, but that is there for your review, and if you have any questions, be happy to answer those. And that is an increase from $55,000 to $60,000 a year. Now, the next issue that I addressed was really kind of an interesting one, and one that I got a lot of input from. We have someone in our midst who's a real cats lover, so Ramona kept me on task and made sure I had the latest information on this community cats program. And, you know, I, I think that Mr. Marcus kind of described the community cats program for us initially, and I've reviewed it in this letter. But basically, what a community cats ordinance does, it is to deal with the increase in stray or homeless cats that the city's been experiencing. And according to some information I've seen, if you have one unspayed female cat and her mate, they can produce over 2 million offspring in eight years. Now, that's pretty impressive, I don't know that they actually counted that, or if that's an estimate, but anyway, that's a lot of cats. This, what happens with a community cats ordinance, basically, is that the governmental entity approves and/or sponsors a program whereby homeless cats in the city would be collected by generally a group of volunteers, which would consist of people to catch the cats, and then veterinarians usually volunteer their time, and they spay or neuter the cats. They also treat the cats with antibiotics. If there's a cat that's, you know, in particularly poor health, they'll go ahead and, and put the cat down. In addition, they clip the cat's ear, so that the cat is identifiable in the future. And, and then, after they've monitored the cat for several days to make sure that it's responded well to the spaying and neutering and the, and the medication that's been provided, and the rabies shot that's been provided, they actually release it back into the habitat from which it came.
Check them for earmuffs and tape marks?
They check it for all that, to make sure they're healthy when they return them back into the community. And this is actually called, they call it a trap neuter release program, TNR. And what happens is, when you implement one of the trap neuter release programs, and the cats are, are put back into their habitat, the cats are less aggressive, according to the studies that I've seen, they are less noisy, you know, of course, the people that have fed them continue to feed them, but due to this program, they are no longer breeding, and the size of the community cat colony decreases over time. Now, does it decrease over time within a year? No. It takes, you know, a significant period of time. For example, one study found a 66% decrease in populations of managed colonies over 11 years, while another study of a TNR program over a 10-year period documented decreases of 16 to 32%. So it, you know, it, it doesn't, certainly does not completely do away with community cats, but it does reduce their number over time. And certainly, a reduction is better than the current increase that we're seeing. The, there are many communities that have implemented TNR ordinances, from Chicago, out in San Diego, North Carolina, and we also have one in Woodford County. And I don't know if we could perhaps partner with Woodford County in some way if the wisdom of the commission is to implement a community cats program or TNR program. You know, you could, you could actually make minimal revisions to our current code of ordinances, where you provide definitions of feral cats as opposed domesticated, as opposed to domesticated cats. And make some minimal revisions to the ordinance to implement a TNR program relatively quickly. If you wanted to make a, a formalized TNR program, that would require more significant revisions to the code, and that could be done fairly quickly, too. But the more formal it's going to be, I think probably the more, it, the more extensive it's going to be, and the more costly it's going to be.
The more formal, the more detailed, we'll get with that?
Right, right, and if you, you know, if you, I would, if the commission is going to implement a TNR program, I think that's something that would need to be implemented by sitting down with the Humane, Humane Society folks, perhaps, you know, creating some kind of committee and getting some local vets involved to see if they participate. I'd say it would also make sense to go up and meet with Woodford County to see exactly what kind of program they're utilizing, and to see what their, you know, when you go on the Woodford County website, you know, it appears that the program is, is a success. I don't know what their reduction in cats has been. So that's, you know, the apparent, the TNR program is definitely a legitimate, valid program. I think it certainly garners the support of volunteers in the community, because, you know, that's something that a lot of people like to participate in, and for good reason. So that's what I provided with respect to, to the TNR program. With respect to, now moving on to the third item, which is revisions to the code, the one revision to the code that, that I think is definitely needed would be the increase in licensing fees. My recommendation would be that the minimal fee be $10, and the reason I say that is because whatever fee is imposed, I think in order for the licensing program to be effective, the veterinarians need to be involved. And in order for them to be involved, there's going to have to be enough of a fee to split with the vets to pay for their administrative costs. Because the way the licensing fee is now, if you split the fee with the vet, they get like a, you know, this is not the exact number, but $2, and that doesn't pay for anybody's tab. So I would agree with the, with the proposal to increase the...
It was $10 enough, so they don't get $5 now?
Right.
And then we have some recommendations?
And they did provide recommendations, but their, their minimal fee was less than $10, and I thought that was awful, awful low. And if, if you want to, you know, that could, if the wisdom of the commission is to create a group to, to take a closer look at TNR, that's, if they're, if they're going to meet with vets as a part of that process, the vets could also be asked about a fair share of a licensing payment, so that they'd be willing to participate in that. So the, the three things, one, or just to kind of recap, one is the contract, what you all want to do on that, two is the TNR program, and then three is the amendment to the code of ordinances to address perhaps the TNR program, and also to address the licensing fee.
Can I ask a question that, while you do that? We plugged in a number in the budget, was 60, the number?
I think it was 55, but I...
So we'll help there, okay. And I've learned more about cats in the last month, and I really appreciate your work on this. I definitely, you recommended the less formalized program, and I think that would be the way to go, and then we'll see how, you know, we get smarter as we go along, other than trying to get a detail and have it take a lot longer. I think everybody would agree that fees need to be increased, because I think you just, you just explained it well, so there's no way we can keep going, this is just my opinion, since we're in the discussion phase, I think the contract looks easy. I mean, just looks like you hit it by the number, and nice to hear that you also, you count mirrors Franklin Counties, because we are trying to work a little better as a team. I think that's all the comments I have.
I would like, commissioners have questions I would like to ask. Mr. Marcus is here, if you were prepared to say anything, if you don't have to, if you don't want to, just wanted to get your thoughts on the contract, if you had a chance to review it.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
I'm going to have to put you on the line, sorry.
I actually, I haven't seen the contract, this is the first I've heard of the fee here, that's proposed at $60,000. Also, I haven't seen the recommendation on the TNR or the fees. I did have a question about the fee structure, did you have a separate structure for an unaltered animal for licensing?
Your fee structure was the same one that I would recommend, I just thought the very first, you know, the, the one that required the least amount of service, I thought the fee was awful low.
Sure. So you had like 10 and... So you had like 10 and 40 or?
Right.
Okay, great. Good to know.
The same numbers you used.
Right. Yes, I appreciate your work on that. I guess as a, I can't answer specifically for the board, because I think we have to meet, but I think I can tell you that we will not be satisfied with the $60,000. I don't know if that means as a board we'll meet and decide to terminate the contract. I don't want to say that tonight, but I think that's a possibility. So just to, just to kind of let you all know. The numbers just don't support that amount of our ability to be able to have an intake of nearly 600 animals from the city per year, as compared to 200 from the county.
Mayor, if I can address that.
One thing that we considered when meeting and discussing this, Mr. Marcus, is that if a TNR program is implemented, then of course, your number should be reduced. And then, in addition, with the increase in licensing fees, of course, the initial reason for the licensing fee is to help pay for the cost of the Humane Society. So to the extent that you receive these licensing fees, then that's going to provide additional revenue. So that's why, in my opinion, I've always considered that licensing component to be critical to the life of the Humane Society, and so I'm glad that the commission is willing to take a look at that, because that will provide additional monies for the Humane Society to pay for their expenses.
And I appreciate that, and I think just in response, if it's okay. We estimated the impact from the increase in licensing fees to be perhaps, at most, probably $5,500, which is a good increase, and we would appreciate that. But I think it should be pointed out that the licensing fees, those help offset the costs of the community animals that we take in. In other words, the city and the county, that the city and county residents bring us, which is about another 1,100, well, actually, it's more than that. It's, I think the city brings us almost 600 now, the county about 200, and we get about 1,200 from the community, because we're over 2,000 per year. So I think that any increase in licensing fees is attributed to that, to the, to the community part of it. As far as the TNR, you're correct, and that's a key component for us, and that will really help. But as you said, and as you know, it'll take some amount of time before we can see any kind of reduction in numbers. Now, I think that's a great hope for the future, maybe as soon as two years, three years, four years, five years' time, we would start to see the intake numbers decrease. And by the way, you know, the city is bringing us over 300 cats right now. The county brings us none. So again, I mean, we want to see those numbers increased. TNR is a really important part of this, and, you know, something that we really appreciate your consideration and hope will approve, but it'll take some time to bring those numbers down. You know, in the meantime, and we don't, as far as I'm concerned, we had talked about it too, I think a three-year contract, you know, now if you wanted to go to five. As far as we're concerned, it doesn't have to be five years. If we feel like in two or three years the numbers start to come down, we should look at the contract again then, and base the figure on, you know, what's happening. But again, I mean, I can, I can just say that I doubt the board is going to support, I mean, we appreciate, you know, your offer, but I doubt the board is going to support a $60,000 service contract.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Two cents on the fee structure that you came up with, Mr. Moore. I'm, I think that's a good idea. I'd like to see a, a group of people look at this TNR cat colony thing. I'm just a natural skeptic, although I have read all of these things, and it does seem to make sense, but, but I'm still a little skeptical. So I'd like to hear kind of how it's working in Woodford County, from the people on the ground, not just what's on the thing. And then maybe if we could get a few people to look into that and see, and I think if that, they come up with that, then I think that's a way to go. But, but just looking at some research and that kind of thing, that's a good step, and if you could get that, I think that makes sense. As far as the contract, I've never been keen on a contract at all. I'm fine with making a donation like we do to other nonprofits. I'm nervous about Mr. Marcus's premise. I, and the premise being that because we have that many cats, or have that many animals that go there that we need to then pay so much money, and that's what this whole purpose is, you know, that, and I'm fine with giving, continuing to give 55,000, and I may go along with 60,000, even though I'm not real keen on it, because then all the other nonprofits are going to want more. And I realize that some people look at this as different, but just to give a history lesson, this is not a city function. It is a county function. We took it on to help. So if we have 10 times the amount of animals that go to the Humane Society, it's still a county function. And so anything that we do is a help to the county, because it's ultimately a county function. And we, as city, people that live in the city pay county taxes, and that's one of the things our county taxes would go toward. So I think this is a good way that we help, and I'm perfectly willing to help. But I, my guess is that if, if you all, if you all reject this, and that's perfectly your right, we also would have the right to get out of the business altogether and give it all to the county. And if that went, and if it goes that way, I'm afraid we'll all suffer. So I don't want to see that either. But that, it could go that way, and then all of a sudden, I think we'd have a first-class mess.
Any other thoughts from commissioners? Because we're not going to make a decision on, on any of this tonight. It's just, this was the recommendation.
What was the figure that you calculated?
Well, we, and we based this on the use of service that we've, that we've provided. We also based it on comparisons of, you know, what, what we think it would cost if you had to do it yourselves in that city and county.
What was the?
But also based on our actual cost of service, which, and I think the finance director and support that you identified is about $7 per day per animal. And that's a historic cost, which I think actually goes back a few years, but, but our figures were aligned with that. And based on that, we were actually at about $98,000 to $100,000, but what we requested from the city is in extending the service contract, is $75,000. So that, that was our actual request.
Okay. Do you have any, any commissioners, any other questions coming up? Well, it's not on the, it's not scheduled to be voted on for the July meeting, it's not on the regular agenda, the contract rate, since it's been added.
The contract is on the agenda.
Oh, it is?
It's the contract on the agenda.
I didn't think it was.
I think so.
No, it's not.
Yeah. You had something on the 7.48.
Abstract to the, yes.
You need to say it on there, 7.48.
I think, I think you may have had that added.
Oh, yeah, that's it.
Because I couldn't remember if it was added or not.
Yeah, there's nothing there yet. It's on mine. I mean, there's no substance.
That was just a placeholder.
Okay.
So it doesn't have, it's just like, excuse me, so it's just, it was just on there in case?
It was a placeholder in case.
Okay.
So it's, so I guess, I guess the question would be, though, in order to send a draft contract, the commission would have to make some type of, give some kind of direction to the city attorney to say whether or not the commission as a whole agrees with the $60,000 contract, which is attached to the back of the agenda, for five years.
Well, can I?
And it does have the right to be terminated on 60 days notice by either party.
Well, I think if we do this TNR thing, I think we'll see a big decrease. I mean, I know it'll take a while before, we'll never have no stray cats, but it might be several years before. It's, it's very, very noticeable. But I think we'll see, I think it'll be noticeable in a year. I don't think we need a five-year contract. I think a couple of years, or even renewable every year. It's my thoughts.
And I think the reason five years was in there is so that we wouldn't have to go back and do contract negotiations every five years, because it has an automatic...
You mean every year?
I'm sorry, every year. But also, every five years, we wouldn't have to look at it, because it has an automatic extension of five years. Unless there's a 60 days in the last, I think it's the last paragraph, or paragraph eight.
And Mayor, it may be premature to put this on the voting agenda, because if we're going to look at TNR and talk to Woodford County, and also talk to some vets to see whether or not, you know, they think 50% of $10 is going to be enough to pay for their administrative costs to issue licenses when they check out a pet on an annual basis, we may need that information, because that was factored in and looked at in coming up with the $60,000 number.
They're doing it now for around two?
I don't know. I think that's the council book goes, I would say. What, Commissioner Rocha?
I guess, one, one thing I'm concerned about is, is how often Mr. Marcus has been here. He works hard, and as far as time, and I do believe, as you just said, because I agree with that, about the study, having them meet or whatever, but I don't know if there's any in-between. In other words, if there's a sense from the commission that, you know, we're going to allocate some, certain dollars, can we, in other words, I don't know what their budgetary needs are, but if they continue to be put off, is that going to put them in a bind? Do we need to make a short-term allocation until we decide this on a more permanent basis? In other words, I think they've been, they've been working with us for about four, and I realize we don't always move the fastest, and that's often because we're trying to do the right thing. But it's, you know, I think he's been gone for four or five months, and still not gotten any resolution.
Well, I'm ready to move on it. Why don't we just move on it?
Well, I got one question before we move on it, because he has said if his board turns it down, so do we owe them a draft? So that determination is made, because if the board turns it down, it's going to be a moot point. It wouldn't be a contract.
Well...
If, I think the way to proceed, if we're not going to try and get additional information before you vote on it, would be to go ahead and, if you want me, you could authorize me to send it to Mr. Marcus tomorrow. I'll get it to him in the mail and let him discuss it with his board and come back and tell us whether or not that's something that's acceptable. If it's not, I'm sure they'll provide us with a counteroffer, and we can bring that counteroffer to the board, and you all can make a decision. I, I still don't think it'll be on the agenda for the voting meeting, although we could put it, you know, put it on and, as a placeholder at 60, and if we agree to 62.5 or whatever, then...
Well, you know, if they're saying 75 and it was 55, would it be more expedient to just, let's go halfway between the two now and not drag this out for three more months and just, I'm ready. I think the TNR sounds fine. I think increasing the fee sounds fine. I think anything you increase it to is going to be better than them getting their $2. I think that they're going to be happy to get three more dollars. And I think we just need to do something, because you're right, it's dragging. And we know that's going to work, because it, it has to work. I mean, biologically, scientifically, it has to work. So I think we just need to do something with it. I would suggest that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want to make one other comment, just to make sure, um, they currently have a 55, 55,000 we've been doing already. So they would get paid something, even, I think we're paying quarterly payments. They would get paid something, so it's not like we're holding them up financially. This is a decision based on a policy of whether we, how we go forward and move from then, so.
Yeah, because we're still getting the money.
Right. So I don't think we need to rush that, just to make sure, you know, because we're not doing it.
I don't think we're rushing at all. I think we're dragging, but that's okay. I can wait another hell of a long. I would recommend that we go up to 65, that we do the TNR, and that we increase the fee to, was it $10?
Correct, although if you want to check with the vets and make sure that they think...
Well, if you check with them, they're going to, they're going to say, no, I would rather you go 25 or 30, is what they're going to say. I mean, if somebody asked me, had you rather have $5 or 10, I'd say I'd rather have 10. But they're taking two right now, so I don't think they're selling.
Well, they're not selling them now.
Yeah, they're not doing it.
Okay, well, then...
They don't actually get anything right now.
Oh.
Right, they're not selling.
They're not doing it.
Point of correction, so they don't get, there's no $2.
Right, the, the place that you get your license now is down to the Humane Society, and that's a very small percentage of the people that have pets go down to the Humane Society to get a license. That's a step that they skip.
So you think that that wouldn't work, the 10?
Well, no, I, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I, I think it probably would work. You know, I've mentioned before, Dr. King at Franklin Animal Clinic actually said the money wasn't what concerned him, they just wanted to be able to integrate into the software program so they could print the, print the licenses and not have to handwrite them. And he said he didn't care what they got based on that. So that's actually one problem in practice that, you know, presumably, we wouldn't necessarily have to pay anything to, but 10 would certainly be an adequate figure, and I think would provide incentive to any other vets that would want a, some kind of agreed-upon arrangement with us. And I think the way the wording was, is that we'd have, we'd agree upon it with practice, unless, I don't know if you adopted it that way or not, because $10 would an agreed-upon amount for the vets that provide the licensing. There was some wording about that. So I think that would actually, you know, with that provision. But I think that provision would work, to be clear.
Well, that would get, if, if you do get, and nobody knows exactly, to try to project, but if, if a $10 fee did bring in an extra $5,500, that would get you to 70,500. I don't know if you want to look at that one, I'm just filling it out. It's a, it's a map.
What? It's bringing in 5,500.
If you did the split, you did 65,000, and then they did an extra $5,500 in additional revenue from sale of licenses at $10 a pop, based on your estimate, which may be low, may be high, may be exact, then that would hypothetically, you know, estimate to be 70,500. Now, if you look at that way, but just, just don't, be helpful.
I guess just following up on Commissioner Bauer suggesting, you know, I, I think if I were to go back to our board and could sell them on 65,000, and with the prospects that TNR will probably, will likely be passed, I know that that may take a little while to happen, but the confidence that that would actually be the case, I think that the board would be well satisfied with that. I mean, that's just, you know, again, just, obviously, I'd have to talk to the board about that, but it would, you know, that would be a nice way perhaps to move things along. It would be nice for us not to have quite as much uncertainty in our budget, since it has been a four-month process now.
Yes, and we get, we're postponing a lot of things that are bigger dollar figures and are going to take more time, and this is something I think that we could actually move forward on without postponing it again, but that's just my one person's opinion. So I would, I would just recommend that we go to 65 and the $10 fee, and let's move with the TNR and do that, and that would be what I would want to do.
I tell you what, I probably won't vote for it, but let's move on. I'll go along with Commissioner Bauer.
Well, you don't have to vote for it, but I mean, that's just...
Let's just get it going.
What do you think, Mayor?
Well, that's, that's about a 17% increase, if you go up 10,000 more dollars, 55 to 65, in terms of our expenditure, and then if you get the additional 5,500, were you basing on a number of animals that typically apply for licenses minus the ones that...
Well, I was actually, and doubling, because I, you know, felt like we'd have a much wider distribution if we went up and had the vets, had some opportunity for the vets to participate. So I, I was actually basing it on the current number, and then projecting an increase with other vets participating, and then also with the fees being increased.
Can this be kind of like, if we do do this TNR, or if, if TNR is approved, by Can this be kind of like, if we do do this T and R, or if T and R is approved by the commission, you had talked about a pilot-type approach?
Right.
Okay, I want to make sure that...
Well, I forgot too, by the way, I'd recommend a three-year contract, not a five-year, if you did go to 65, just so that we could review T and R in three years and take a look and see, and based on the numbers then, you know, perhaps it can drop after that, so that you wouldn't be committed to 65 for a five-year period.
So, I would make a three-year, and if someone actually, if the commission actually wanted to end the contract prior to that three-year period, there is a 60-day out where you can cancel it with 60 days' notice to the other party. So, I'll amend it to six, three years, and then 65 for your all's review, and that'll be on the agenda to vote up or down on...
On the 28th?
On the 28th, if the Humane Society Board agrees with that.
That'll move it forward.
Did y'all want to, like, Commissioner Headen to delete that task force?
Yes.
Does that you have any consent on that?
You need to talk to T and R's guy.
Just kidding. Thank you all very much. So, you're going to, you're all going to discuss that and then...
Pleasure. We'll talk soon.
You're welcome, thank you.
Alcohol?
Thanks, Commissioner.
Call for alcohol?
Right there, right there for Steve.
Okay, this is to change the city's alcohol ordinance to reflect the recent changes in the legislature statutes that allow alcohol to be sold on election day.
Well, there were two issues that needed to be addressed, Mr. Mayor. One is whether or not alcohol can be sold on, when the polls are open, and under state law, if the city chooses to do that, then alcohol could be sold on election day.
Between that and the 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM.
And then the other issue is whether the commission wants to change our, the city's alcohol ordinance to adopt a number of additional licensing opportunities. For example, right now, the city's alcohol beverage control ordinance does not have a microbrewery license, so if someone wanted to open a microbrewery...
Do we have one of those, a microbrewery?
Yeah. Someone had actually talked about...
San Clair Mall.
Opening one up on the San Clair Mall. And then there's a brew on premises license, a qualified historic site license, but there are a number of additional type of licenses that are available, and so those, so Mr. Dawson and I wanted to get the commission's wisdom on that, see whether you want us to work on a revision to the ordinances, and then Steve also wanted to address the fees for the ordinance that, for the type of licenses that we currently have.
Yeah, for example, right now, we've got 11 different fees to charge, and for last visit, Mayor, we took in about $25,000 in licensing fees for alcohol. And we had approximately 69 businesses, so it averages out to about $370 per business, per license. And several businesses have multiple licenses. But, you know, Rob and I had discussed, you know, if we take, I reckon, the maximum amount of increase that we take a year to start to round the fees up a little bit, I would take about 4% increase, it'd only be about $1,000 increase per year. So, I didn't really think it would probably be real effective. So, we, so I think Rob's suggestion, maybe to consider some of these other licenses might be more effective, like, if the commission desires to raise revenue.
And as Steve indicated, the maximum amount, you can increase a fee in a given year's 4%, and I think that the city manager will agree that there were several calls this year inquiring about the sale of alcohol on election day. Of course, we currently, currently, we have an ordinance in effect that precludes that.
I need to...
So...
They could have given it away and then put it on the calendar, but shouldn't tell people how to start that. Too late now.
So, the questions before us are whether or not you raise fees for microbreweries, and what else?
So, do they not pay a fee at all if they're a microbrewery?
They, we can't issue them a license.
Okay.
So, that, the question is whether to raise fees...
So, that's a pretty easy one for the microbrewery.
Right, and do you want Steve to go through the process of updating our ordinance to include a number of the different licensing opportunities that are available now?
So, would this put raised fees on existing businesses?
No.
It would just allow us to attract a broader base?
That's right.
Okay, so that seems pretty easy, too.
Okay, so that's one.
All right, okay.
So, we'll do that, then. Two is whether you do want to sell alcohol on election day, and I think to be, you know, there were some people that thought that, thought that our current ordinance needed to be reenacted, if you will, in order to be effective. So, if, if the commission is going to remain firm on not selling alcohol on election day, then we would just need to re, we would need to pass that same ordinance. So, that's two. And then three is whether or not you want to increase the fees on the existing licenses by somewhere between 1 and 4%.
Okay, I got it. Well, then two, I think we shouldn't sell alcohol on election day, and I, I hate to hurt businesses, because it does hurt their business, but I still think we live in an environment where people use alcohol to buy votes, and so as a result, I'm thinking that we need to dissuade that. And then number three, I think the alcohol business is a, is a tough business, particularly if you're not a chain, so increasing fees on people that are just an independent business person, when they're, when they're barely keeping their doors open in this particular business now, I don't think that's a good idea. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't leave for that.
Can I clarify for something? I think the way the statement was written, it's just the hours of 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
I'd have to go back.
It should be like after 6:00 PM, then people can sell alcohol like that.
During polling hours.
Yeah, just polling at 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
So, Commissioner Rocha, you don't want to have a license for those microbreweries, is that what you're saying?
No, I want us to be able to have them.
You want that, or...
Yes, yeah, that seemed to me to be easy, that we want to attract more business here, and that that would allow us to have a mechanism for that. And I don't think we should sell alcohol during poll, polling times because of vote buying. And the third thing is I don't think we should raise the fees on people that are selling liquor, because I think that will hurt independent owners who are barely hanging on any way against the larger merchants who have big operations. You know, all of a sudden, everybody moved to the drugstore. You know, it's hard to compete with the drugstores, and I'm not for them not selling it either, but it's, it's hard for them, so I don't think we should increase their costs. That's my two cents.
I would go along with you.
I support everything, I have to make sure you understand the last part. We're talking about licensing fees increases, so it's not going to increase businesses. This is only when you go in to get a license. That's your dollar figure that you have to have, so I'm, I think I'm missing something. I want to make sure.
Yeah, renew, they were coming, businesses coming to renew once a year in May, so they would, they would get a business license, an alcohol.
Would you repeat those, so they can know the numbers?
Pay a fee.
So, it would increase a business that has a license, and they go to renew, then they have a new, okay.
Yeah.
Then I can...
Why don't you, for clarification, just say what those current fees are?
Well, it's pretty, it's pretty exhausting.
But if you take like...
We've got a cater's license, we've got a...
I think we're talking about the people that are selling it. I don't want to pick one person out.
Like your Walmart, Kmart, Kroger's.
I think, I think the commission's more concerned about, like, okay, say like Capital Sellers, or the local, I'm just picking that out because it's the first one that came to my mind, because it's close. Something like that size.
69, 69 businesses that sell either across the counter or packaged alcohol in the city are paying a license fee.
Okay, so someplace that's selling like...
It averages, like I said, about 370 businesses. Of course, it, you know, the range is broad, depending on what you're selling, you know, packaged beer, or you're selling, you know, wines, or whatever you sell.
And I guess, Mayor, the, we have a, we used to have a retail liquor package dealer's license, and that was $500. That was recently renamed quota retail package license. The fee remained the same of $500. So, even if we add a new license for a microbrewery, the annual fee for the quota retail package license of $500 would not change. So, every year, they've got to pay not only the fee to the city of Frankfurt, which is $500, but they also pay their fee for whatever amount it is to ABC, to the state.
They pay, they pay perhaps seven, but the state, that same licensing.
So, that, that amount would stay the same.
I was looking at the chart the city manager had, and someplace like Seraphini is paying 750 or 850, so what would that increase?
It would not. There would be no increase.
No, it's not like if you, under the, well, if there's not support, we won't even waste, they don't even worry about it. I don't think there's any support.
All right. So, I, do you all want to add on the agenda for July 28, the new licenses, and then the, just reenact our prohibition against the sale of alcohol during, while the polls are open?
Did they repeal, they didn't repeal it? But is it, they just repeal and reenact?
I'm not sure that we do, but when you talk to Steve, the attorney for the ABC, he's much more comfortable if we do reenact it.
Okay, so do we need to repeal it and reenact? Or does it, have we covered that?
I'll have to, I don't know that we need to, we can just reenact it. I don't think we need to repeal.
Okay.
We'll do that. Right, that's just, that's just changing the names.
I'm going to ask Ms. Secretary, because she works in foods and beverage industry, so I would like to ask...
Oh, that's right.
...what you think about.
Well, the only comment I wanted to make, the observation that I wanted to make regarding this is that I appreciate Commissioner Rocha's comments about buying votes on election day, but I will relate to you that Holly Hill Inn hosted a lunch on election day this year for 70 people. Now, these were Brown Foreman guests who were on their way from the Coop Ridge in Louisville to Woodford Reserve in Woodford County. Now, as it turns out, those 70 people did not drink while they were at Holly Hill Inn. But, that's 70 people, international guests visiting Kentucky, who could care less that it's election day in Kentucky.
That's true.
And that was Brown Foreman, major employer in the state, you know, bringing these folks to the state. You know, we had nothing to gain that day, one way or the other, by serving these folks alcohol, because they had asked us not to offer it because of the fact that when they had these Brown Foreman brand reps in town, they spent their entire day going from place to place sampling.
They don't need anymore.
And they don't need anymore, it's part of their job that day. But I just want to say that from a restaurant perspective, from a business manager's perspective, from somebody in the hospitality industry, please think about that, because, you know, you want to grow business, you want to expand opportunities for business owners, don't choke us on an issue like that. If the state repeals the law, don't be too quick to pass up that opportunity, and that's why I'm going with it.
Okay.
So, that would primarily affect lifetime or receptions?
And we've had, twice in the last two election cycles, we have had events on election day during...
It could affect the evening, too. It could affect the whole day.
And you know, we're a, we're a family-owned business, so we're not a chain, you know, we have five businesses, none in Franklin County yet.
I have a question. If, it says, it says sale of alcoholic beverages, I believe the statute that was repealed said sale between the hours of 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM. I don't really get technical, but if someone includes that, I don't know.
From my standpoint, it would still be a sale, because we're, because of the way the alcohol statutes are, if we're, we're open to the public. So, even if we're hosting a private event, technically, we are still open to the public and have to abide by ABC's...
What I was thinking, if I'm hosting an event, as an event planner, which I'm not going to use myself, if John Doe is hosting an event as an event planner, and has it as a host bar, and at the end of the evening or afternoon, because it would be before 6:00 PM, that was my question.
Not if it's a business that has a retail liquor by the dr, or where the licenses call.
Okay. Okay, now, in Woodford County, did Woodford County ever sales on their way? They repealed it? Okay, or been repealed, but they, okay, got it.
For ways forward, we can also sell alcohol on Sundays beginning of November, which I have to tell you is a tremendous, tremendous business.
Well, we can look that up later, because we're not going to sell it tonight. I just had a question about that. Next item.
Mayor, well, we come back to something, or do we want to do the next item? I was having a thought here.
What do you want to go back to?
Animals.
Is there no objection, we'll go...
Animals, I have not yet.
I mean, if the commission doesn't want to do it, we don't want to.
Well, not right now, can we, you still have it on your mind again?
Yep, our mommy cannot forget it.
The next item is CSX easement acquisition.
What is it?
CSX easement acquisition.
That's easy, no action.
All right.
I did get an email back from CSX, their representative this afternoon, an individual by the name of Kevin Hurley, and he was looking at records that we had previously provided to Beth Steele, their representative, that apparently moved into another position. So, tomorrow, I told him I would send him a new, I told him that I would send him another copy of what I'd previously provided to Ms. Steele, so he could see specifically what the city wants to obtain.
Was she legal counsel?
No. She just worked on rail trail issues.
So, we're not of a condemnation stick here?
No, although if you want to address that, I'm prepared to address that tonight.
Go ahead.
As you all know, the city of Frankfurt has the power of the image to remain. The condemnation must be in furtherance of the public purpose of the city, and not in conflict with the constitutional provision or statute. I would say that condemning property for use as a bike or pedestrian trail would be in a public purpose. And what happens in the condemnation process is the city commission has to vote that we need the property, and that we want to institute condemnation. You're first required to attempt to reach agreement with the property owner. If you want to try it, but, you do need to try it by first for fair market value, and we would have to hire an appraiser to determine what the fair market value is. If you can't reach agreement with the property owner, then you file a petition with the court, circuit court in this case. The circuit court appoints three commissioners, and the commissioners, in order to be a commissioner, all you have to be is a landowner in Franklin County. The commissioners go out and they take a look at the property, and they say, okay, the city wants a 60-foot wide swath or have a... city wants a sixty-foot wide swath or have a wide, the property would be, and say, okay, you want to take this swath of property from the rest of the property, that decreases the value of their property from $100,000 to $80,000. And then the commissioners report their award to the court. And then, at that point, if they've said that the amount to be paid to, in this case, CSX is $20,000 because their property's been reduced by that amount in value, then the CSX would be informed, at that point, you actually inform CSX that a condemnation suit has been filed. CSX would have the right to first assert that the condemnation is wrongful, and they also have the right to assert that $20,000 is not enough. Of course, the city does have the right to condemn property, so if CSX, if they do object to the condemnation process, that objection's going to be without merit. Then at that point, the court enters an interlocutory judgment saying that we, the city, can take possession of the property. What you do is you just pay the $20,000 into court. And at that point, the city takes possession of the property. If CSX has, if they object and say that $20,000 is insufficient, and that the reduction in the fair market, their value of their property has been $60,000, then they ask for a jury trial. And you have a jury trial before the Franklin Circuit Court, and you basically have a battle of the, of the appraisers. And we have our appraiser that says, well, you know, the diminution in the value of the property is $20,000, and you have CSX's appraiser that testifies, well, the property's been diminished by, you know, $100 gazillion. And then the jury decides what the actual amount of diminution in the value of the property was. And then, and then the case is over. You know, of course, someone can file an appeal if they want to. But the important thing is, is once you get your interlocutory judgment saying that you do have the right to condemn the property, and the commissioner's award was $20,000, you just pay that $20,000 to the Franklin County Circuit Court clerk. And at that point, you can start taking action to build the, to build the trail. Okay? The other thing is, you do have to take action to build the trail within eight years of getting the deed, providing possession to the city. Otherwise, the person who originally owned the property, in this case, CSX, would be able to buy the property back for the amount that we paid into court. And you all may remember, up in Louisville, they actually had that happen, where there was some property condemned close to the zoo, and they didn't use it for zoo purposes. So the city sold it to a developer, the developer started building houses, and all of a sudden, the original owner said, wait a minute, that's my property. So that's, that's the condemnation process, and we can condemn railroad property.
Well, I say we go ahead. You know, we've been talking about, and I'm, and I'm big on property rights, but we've been, we've been talking about this thing since I got on the commission. And you've done a bunch of stuff, and before I got involved.
Right, since 2011.
Okay. I bet, I bet all of us have asked forty times, different people, where we were on this. And I'm not satisfied with where we are, and I don't think it's our fault. So I'm, I think that we should proceed with condemnation, because this is an exceptional issue. It's not something we take lightly, that there doesn't appear to be any other way. There's no value to this property where, where we're asking for it, they'll never use it. And there's just so much, that's such a large organization, that I would assume that this probably isn't something that's, it's not even past the furnace back burner for them. So I would think if you initiated this, that things ought to start moving pretty quickly. They may even figure out that they don't own the amount of acres that they think they own either. Since the hillside's not even that many acres, I don't think.
They own, it seems to be eleven point eight, eleven point four acres in that area. And we would take a slice out of that eleven point four acres. The valuation of that eleven point four acres, according to their appraiser, and we have not seen the written appraisal, this is just based on a letter, is right at, I think, $400,000.
I saw that number.
So, you know, they're going to argue that, that the, that the property is worth more than...
And I'm hoping we're going to argue that you couldn't give it away, and that nobody would even take that hillside if you gave it to them. So anyway, I think we ought to move toward condemnation.
Well, let me give you a recommendation here, and that is, give me thirty more days. And I, I will rattle the, I will say the commission is very interested in this, and they've even bandied about the condemnation word. And if you could please focus on this and give us a number within the next thirty days, if that would be acceptable.
I think that's fair.
And just a clarification on something you just said, they don't own the hill, right? They just own the bottom part?
They actually own, and the portion that we want is actually about, I'd say, a third of the way up the hill. We don't want the bottom part on the flat land, we want the part going up the hill.
I think for that trail, you're going to have to come off of that trail. And I thought their property was the one at the bottom.
Well, the drawing that I've seen has a structure at the end where there's a, where there's a cut, where you drive through to go to the church. And they would have a, a structure that has steps and a ramp that you would come down off of. It's about a ten-foot drop.
Yeah. Yeah, I walked up there with somebody, just walking the trail, and there was a big drop at the end.
Right. And that's where the ramp would be.
Now, where you, I think where you're talking about, though, the trail actually, where you call it starter end is right behind Commonwealth Credit.
Right, right.
It's only about a six-foot drop, or six, seven-foot drop.
Is it? Okay. Does CSX, do they own that trail part?
They own, I can't remember exactly how much. We, we own the Pensley Trail. We own three-quarters of it. Then you get down to the last, I don't know, fifteen hundred foot, give or take, something like that. CSX owns it. So we actually own all the way back to the, to the concrete plant, to the overlook. But I, I found it odd, after we've been dealing with this for multiple years, that CSX, the person we tried to deal with, Beth Steele's title is Rails to Trails Manager.
Really? That's funny.
Not to be critical, but I mean, that's true.
Well, this is the, you know, the person we're dealing with now is the third person that we've dealt with, because there was Mr. McMahon, and then he moved on, then they had Ms. Steele, and apparently she's moved on, so.
To the extent that appraisals are based on comparable sales, I'll just remind everybody that the Pensley, this Pensley section of the trail, which is the most, the most obvious comparison to make, boy, they did, as Commissioner Orosch drives, they gave that to the city. I think the only condition was if we take a bunch of their other property as well.
It's just not something anybody would want.
Right. But I think it would compare very favorably for us, as far as the appraisal.
See it back on in August? Or I guess we sent a memo over.
Right.
All right, next item, sale of city-owned property, just the city attorney again.
City attorney or Gary?
I think Gary's had the most recent conversations with Mr. Hancock.
Is this on the commercial property or the residential property?
I think it's this thing. Or just let it update.
I'd like to see the commissioners at least to ask for an update.
I think it's this, I think it, since I was one of those two, I think it's this thing that Rob sent, I think through Tim or something, about the status of those properties, and that you just recommend that we just sell one, and then update on those other properties that we're, that we're marketing, on Carpenter Farm and out by Walmart.
Right. We, with respect to the residential properties that were reviewed, and all but one determined really not to be sellable at this point in time, I sent an RFP to the city manager, I think on June the 20th, and I don't know where we are on that. Do you want to publish that RFP?
Is there any objection to that?
And then, then if, if someone bids and does want to represent the city in selling that property as our real estate agent, then we, of course, would bring the contract back to the commission for approval.
So, but is there a, isn't that the, isn't that a pretty low-value parcel?
All these parcels are very low-value.
That's right. So...
That's why we own them.
Yeah. I got that. Although we own some higher-valued ones, the ones you get ready to talk about are higher-valued. I don't know how we got that either, but, so is, is that the, I guess, is that the most effective process to try to get, get this sold?
Well, what I, what I would anticipate is we would do an RFP, and then if we do enter into a contract with a real estate firm or individual agent, then at that point, that contract would be for a year, so that if other properties identified, then that individual, that same individual could sell other properties. The other option to, to selling that, one is if you're concerned about just having to take care of it, we could, the city could declare it surplus and see if we can give it away. And then the third option, of course, is to just go ahead and advertise it for sale by sealed bid in the newspaper. And we've done that before.
How much do you, either one of you got any sense of what this is, what value this has, as almost an everything?
Yeah, the, I bring that with me, the PVAs had a test value for tax purposes, I believe it's $4,000 in North State. I don't think it was more than that. It was on one of my printouts a few months back. I can email to y'all tomorrow morning.
I think that sounds right.
But I think it was right around, it wasn't.
So is it making any sense to fool with getting a realtor, except for the point you're talking about, which is to, to, then you'd have somebody that you can give other properties to?
Memory serves me that both tracks on either side of it are vacant. It's very steep, but it doesn't connect to Fort Hill, so it doesn't help us to keep it for that.
You know, there's minimal expense to, to put in a newspaper for an RFP and hire a realtor, and then perhaps, you know, if some other properties are identified...
Yeah, it makes sense, just so we get out of it, so we don't have to maintain it. Okay, that makes sense.
Well, I did have one property owner contact me here, it's property at the base, we said Fort Hill. What street is that on? It's not a book, but it's...
It's written on a book, so... We're talking about JT's food garden once?
Yeah, behind it.
Yeah, it's whatever that street is, it turns out.
There's a street back, I can't remember this, but at least count. She used to know if the city would want it. I just, I just was throwing that out, because...
No, we really don't, I mean, it's, you know, there's...
I just, I just wanted to throw it...
With nature trails and the historic part of Fort Hill, we use about sixty acres of the hundred and forty that are there, and it would just be separated by eighty acres of woods, you know, and then it'd be two empty lots would be...
That's what I...
Mowing, we'd just be mowing it now.
Just be something else to mow?
Yeah, well, we've had, we've had several property owners, city years, want to give us land outside the boundaries of Fort Hill, and it just doesn't really make sense.
Oh, was he going to bring it up at the, but because when we talked about it, I thought well, just do it that way.
I personally talked to those property owners.
Okay, great. Any other comments on city-owned property? Okay, if not, I guess we move on down. Go ahead.
I don't think he, I thought somebody was going to maybe talk to us a little bit about the nicer properties.
On the commercial side, from my discussions with Century 21, or Marketing Edge, Lernerwood has been pretty quiet. There's been one interest that they're talking to, but not on a regular basis by me. Carpenter Farm, there is a real interest in part of the lot, very, very bad, but the true interest is on the, what used to be Lot Three, that we included with the Plankboard donation out, sale. Something we'd like, and I believe Tim has tried to talk to Plankboard, but we're not successful in renegotiating any boundaries of their ownership. They're holding on to what they have, and I think they're trying to meet their three-year obligation to build. Until then, I don't think we have an option on it. The next signage, all properties, I mean, digital lots are posted with Century 21, and we're working with them to try to put a larger sign out on these West Connectors. But we don't own any actual lots, that front, it's truly visible, and we can't just take it in the ride of life. So I'm trying to work with the skate riders, to allow us to put one out. Otherwise, we can put one, but it's...
We'd be like everybody else doing that thing.
That's why I'm laughing.
Yeah, we have to get permission. I, I'm involved, we're going to get permission.
I understand, it's funny.
Get that guy that wears the certain, I'm not going to say the costume, but the certain costume that we all know that we get.
Yeah.
Just, you'll put it up, right? I'm sorry, because I'm not going to name the business, but we'll tell you all later. I'm going back.
But those are the four of two areas. It is promising that there is movement.
Thank you so much. Any further discussion on the project? Okay, and next item, did we have any issues on the agenda? I do hope we have to afford a place to see the project before Wednesday, maybe tomorrow, probably Wednesday.
Sooner rather than later.
I've been trouble getting people to send me their resumes. Is Wednesday the deadline, right?
Well, the deadline is Tuesday at noon, actually. I'll cut you a little slide.
I told one of them about last Friday. Okay, then I guess go to staff reports.
A couple of quick things. We had another successful Fourth of July event in Frankfurt. Thank everybody that helped, the city staff, police is always great, emergency management, fire, public works, everybody that contributed. And once again, it was very successful, no, not even a fender bender this year, I don't think, or anything, which was pretty awesome. We'll be having a, you'll see in the paper Sunday, the radio stations are supporting a goodbye to Juniper Hill Pool next Thursday night, the 24th, from six to eight. Anybody that's ever worked there, or been there, or stopped by, or done things you shouldn't have done there, so I include you all.
Is this Thursday?
No, the 24th, from six to eight, so I'll stop by for that. We'll be opening the aquatic center bids next Tuesday. As of date, I believe nineteen firms have picked up packages, and from three different states. And we got the, the contract back from county on their portion of the indoor study, so we're putting a committee together. I know Jim's been working with Tim and some people for the indoor facility study coming up with a panel. So that's all set in stone, and we've been working with the street department, and I'm sure he'll tell you a little bit about the Green Hill Cemetery law. I got a real nice, real nice email from Irma Johnson from the Green Hill Cemetery Board today, thanking the city and everything for what we've done.
Thank you, Mayor.
Public work?
Yes, sir, I've got two items, and I'll segue off that one, go right into the first one. We'd like to add to the agenda, in the consent agenda portion, a project to construct about 480 feet of sidewalk, and has to replace the sidewalk that is between the wall and Main Street. It is... Main Street. It is in rough shape to start with, before the project, and there's a lot of heavy equipment over it. In the replacement of this wall, it's not being held forward. So under our unit price contract, we'd like to add that. We estimate the professional services, the reconstruction, and contingency to be less than $15,000 recovered under our given funds that we've got. Secondly, this one is a good one, through the wall, to finish that. When I saw this morning, it was about 50 percent. Jim lets me know right in the section, and our culture was 75 or so. We expect the construction of the wall to be completed this week, backfill, dressing up the hillside itself to be, depending on what the weather does tonight, to be by the end of the week, first thing next week. The second one we have is kind of convoluted, and I'm, my knowledge of this is only at about the 10,000-foot level. Tom is much more in the weeds on this than I am, so I'm going to read what he had submitted to the update, and then we can move forward on that. It made, this is in regards to the transit wash bay, the bids involved with that. It made the city commission approve a bid award for Meyer Midwest to construct the transit wash bay, subject to the Office of Transportation delivery's approval. The office denied approval because Meyer Midwest was not the lowest bidder. The city's consultant, QK4, determined that the two of those bidders were non-responsive because they did not meet the bid document qualifications. The lowest bidder was not pre-qualified with KYTC, and the second lowest bidder did not meet the DVE, or disadvantaged business enterprise criteria required by the language. Although the Office of Transportation delivery reviewed the bid documents prior to our recommendation for award, their stance is that the KYTC's pre-qualification was not necessary, as necessary in our documentation. It was not necessary that the minimum DVE participation percentage was a goal, not a requirement. Their office contends that the bidder should attempt to fulfill a requirement, but not shall, as we have in our language. It's kind of a condition there that this brings up. The Office of Transportation delivery suggests that the city waive those two conditions of the bid documents and award the project to the lowest bidder. However, our public works have met with Mr. Moore a couple times on this issue. We feel that the city may, while the city may literally waive these requirements, it's probably not in the city's best interest to do so. It's our opinion to either drop the project entirely and ask KYTC permission to spend the money in some other format, or to re-advertise the bid. The biggest issue on the table is that those who did meet the requirements, probably did so at premium to meet the disadvantaged business enterprises, so it's not a level playing field for what their bids might have been versus if they did not originally meet. We don't have a problem eliminating that language from the contact documents, and therefore rebidding it, but we want to do so, keep the language, so everybody can bid the same offices. We all had awarded it on contingency of recent employment, it does not. We recommend we scrap the bid we've got, but about the same.
I think Commissioner Rush wants to ask a question, Solicitor.
Yeah, you're exactly right. Is, so is that all legal, legal, everything fine, if we do that? This sounds like a mess.
Right. I think it is fine if we do that. Frankly, I'm concerned that, you know, where our contract documents, which were reviewed by the transportation cabinet and approved, if we, if we now tell our bidders, oh, we didn't really mean what we said, then it could cause some problems. Would it result in, in litigation? Could. Would we lose the litigation? Probably not, because disappointed bidders have very little rights in litigation. But I think you may actually get a lower bid if you rebid it, because I think now people will sharpen their pencil, plus they know they don't have to comply with the DVE requirements, and they do not have to be pre-qualified.
So your recommendation would be to rebid it?
Correct.
Okay.
We got an objection.
That's good.
We're not at that point.
I think we're there.
Got an objection, we'll do it. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
We're opening bids tomorrow on a liquid oxygen, which we use for disinfection, and I'd like to add the bid award to consent award this month. There's no objections.
There's no objection, we'll let that?
Grant, any relations?
Items. First of all, as of Friday, we are live on Twitter and Facebook, so I'm going to pass around this question to please like and share us. If anybody has any items that they want to put on there, please let me know, and we'll add them. I'm working with IT to get that on our website, so people can connect that way and to get a thing following. The other item, Maya DeRosa and I reviewed the grant and loan applications that we've received for our grant, historic grant and loan program. We had originally, you all had allocated $40,000 for that project, $20,000 for the loan program, and then $20,000 for the grant program. The $20,000 for the loan program was to buy down the interest for four loans. We actually only got two loan applications, so that freed up $10,000 that we're not going to be using for the loan program. We got nine applications for the grant program, six for commercial, and three for residential. So we would like to move that $10,000 from the loan to the grant, and give two commercial grants and one residential, kind of make a little bit more even, if that's all right with everybody.
Yes.
That's all. Thank you.
May I ask Director Dawson?
Yes, sir. I was going to give you some background. In the past, we've used, for a new issue of bond, we used financial advisor, Brandon James, he's our financial advisor, Bob Finkin, and also Stowe Kingdom Ogden, Phil Davis is our bond counsel. And I wanted to see what the commission's desire was for the aquatic center, the upcoming aquatic center bid. I, there, do you want us to, we had thought about setting another queue route for that, to get a bid for those two services for the aquatic center, and I wanted to see if that was, to make sure that's the commission's desire to do that.
I think so. I've received a couple of phone calls on bond counsel, and also, what else? I think I referred to, I would refer them to the city manager and finance director rather than answer questions, so that may be a result of that, because folks had said, why do we always use the same people? We'll pass the staff and see if people want to bid it out. Is that what we talk, well, request for quotes?
Yeah, request for quotes, yeah.
I can't vote or say anything one way or the other, because the current person we have is my business partner.
I'd like for you to do what you normally do, typically do, and I missed the first part of that, so I don't know.
But we, we've been you of those folks, and we've got a lot of, a lot of the projects we've done, they've been heavily involved, so they know our financial condition, and they know our history. So that's, recognize the advantage of using, you know, those folks. But I can understand, certainly understand, yours is ours, if you want to take that outside, you get some quotes.
I'd rather use somebody local, and if that person's local, I'm in support of, as evidently is, since it sounds like you're doing...
They're in Lexington, Lexington area.
Guess that's considered local. They're the suburbs of Frankfurt.
What?
You still thinking?
I'm thinking it might just be considered East Frankfurt. Far East.
Now, what are our choices? If we don't do it that way, we have to.
Well, you know, our choice, we can continue to do what we've been using, those same folks, or I can take it for quote. That's what, I just wanted to see if you all want to put the business out, and I'm buying that, that's what.
May I ask a question, Mayor? And that is, are you going to ask for a request for qualifications? Is that what you're going to do?
Well, we need, I suppose we'll have to come up with those qualifications, once the bid package out, right?
Okay, because a request for qualifications just provides qualifications, it does not provide a specific bid quote. It doesn't provide a dollar figure. So if we're, if we're going to do an RFQ, which requests qualifications, and add a bid document component, then I believe we probably need to amend our purchasing ordinance, because, or purchasing policy, because right now, if we ask for RFQ, ask for an RFQ, or issue an RFQ, I don't believe that we can ask for a monetary quote. And that's, that's based upon the purchase policy that Bill provided to me.
I think I provided you a purchase policy, and I thought it said, in, as an alternate to the RFP process, the city for professional services may use an RFQ process.
I think it can use an RFQ process, but it says that cost cannot be a component.
Under the RFQ.
Under the RFQ process.
But under the RFP, which I think you can go either way, it does allow a cost component, so.
So you, so, well, of course, Steve was saying RFQ, so if you say a request, an RFP, I'd have to look at that.
Attorney has to be cute. We can talk about that.
Please?
Attorney, yes, attorney services should be on.
Usually attorney services are RFQs, though. But we can look at that.
Yep.
Is that okay?
What was decided? What was decided?
What did you, you said you all are going to go more than a new RFQ or an RFP?
Right, but then the question is whether you all want to use the people that we've used in the past, or whether you want to do the RFP or RFQ process. And I think we need a little bit more guidance on that.
Should we wait till the whole board's here?
Might not be a bad idea, plus we can tie this issue down.
Because if we're not, are we in a rush?
We're going to try to, we're talking about the bondage, it's maybe in the fall, early fall, right, maybe September.
So then if we...
So next month's...
Bring it up at the July.
We'll do a July voting meeting.
It's a shame.
Well, we're not, we'll just, let's put it on the July agenda, if you're not comfortable. We have to call the special meeting or something, we can do that. Although I don't really like doing a special meeting unless we really have to. Unless it's going to mess with, I don't want to mess with the timing.
Rob and I can, we can discuss. Rob said you can nail it down, and you can make the choice, either or, would that mean?
Not going to wait till the whole board is here.
July, we're put on the July 28th agenda. And the question will be, what are P's or RFPs, or just continue to use the same companies and individuals?
Fighting Director?
Have one agenda item to add, or ceremonial items if possible. That would be to recognize the awards for the city's grant and program. The plan is on April 24th at the South Frankfurt Mary Ruth Study Meeting, actually do the drawings, and then have the ceremony for the winners at 28th, the city commission. If I can add that if possible.
And then I have a consent item 7.2. I don't anticipate any changes, but my absence last week, I wasn't going to give Rob, so I'll begin with him, just to confirm there's no issues on that.
Chief Director Field?
Mr. Moore? Can I, I apologize for talking so much this meeting, but I prepared a resolution in support of bike lanes on a portion of US 60, and I've got an email from Ms. Hecker either yesterday or today, indicating that we need to include sidewalks in there. So if I could have permission to include a paragraph and tweak that resolution so that it supports not only the bike lanes, but also the sidewalks?
There's no objection, no thing about doing objection.
City clerk moving?
Reminder, August 5th is National Night Out. Those of you who have agencies that have partnered with us before, make sure, we spoke today about bike coming out, but if you have partner agent, you represent partner agencies that have been with us before, please come out. But August 5th, at Lakeview Park, it's partnership between the Frankfurt Police Department, Franklin County Sheriff's Office, and Kentucky State Police. It's a national line program, and it focuses on crime, and crime prevention, and community partnerships for the community. Obviously, it's the night before school starts, it happens every year, but that's the second base school. City schools start August 1st, I believe, and county schools is the 6th, so it's that time of year.
What time is it then?
It's from 5:00 till 8:00, I believe.
Under all this, anybody have any old business?
I do, because I've got a question, I guess. I think I know the answer. It's been a long time since we talked about this, probably since I was here before, but do we have, like, mechanisms, do we have instruments to measure decibel levels of police force when we get calls? Because I had a, I don't get a lot of these calls, but I got one recently where it was a restaurant where the noise was so loud that two and a half blocks away, she couldn't sleep. And I know she's probably telling the truth, because I've gone to that restaurant at night and did not get out of my car, because the noise threw my closed windows on my car. I'm like, I don't want to go in there, it's too loud. And the officer had told her that, he didn't think it was too loud. And so I just, here's what I want to say. I want to impress on everyone, for you to impress on everyone, that if we didn't have residents in this city, we wouldn't have businesses. And I know that some of these places get really loud, and she told me that she was told they didn't have anything to measure the decibels with. And I know, Mayor, we had this conversation several years ago, why don't we have something to do that with when we get those calls? We need them, don't we need them?
No. And the reason why is the way the law is, you start measuring decibels, and then you're going to have to train somebody to operate the equipment that could be kind of, I mean, it's, it's not like a portable breathalyzer that you blow into or hold up and go, that's, that's too loud. You know, the law would have to be changed. Now, as far as what the officer told that person, if he told that person that there was nothing he or she could do about it, then that was wrong. I would like to know about it and look into that caller in a little more detail, because we did get those types of calls.
Right.
Whether it's from houses, loud parties, some of the establishments downtown. The way the noise ordinance is written, you know, noise cannot emanate from a premises. So unless, once again, I encourage people to call us if they're, if they're getting the noise, but if we're not handling the calls correctly, I would appreciate knowing that, and then we can address it beforehand.
Right. And I'm just, I'm talking in general on this, because I just think sometimes we get so focused on the businesses, that we forget that we have residents that have purchased homes, and they've chosen to live here. And if we don't take those calls seriously, or we say to them, I don't think it's too loud, then what we do is we smack them in the face, and people aren't going to want to live here. And I know that, you know, I've made some of those calls myself, when I have to be at work at 8:00 in the morning, and I've got to go find a place in the house to find quiet. And the police have always responded very promptly to my calls, and I so much appreciate that. So I'm not trying to pick on any one person, or, but just, I got that call, and I said, it's more than just that call. I think we all need to remember that we serve the residents here. That's who the businesses serve, that's who we serve, and they'll stay in business as long as our residents are happy. And, but when, I know we've had that decibel measurement instrument conversation before, and you probably told me the same thing, but I know it makes it really hard on the person that's called to investigate, and then they've got to make a subjective decision. And just if I were in that person's shoes, that would be really hard for me to do, without some instrument to back up what my, you know what I'm saying, what I'm determining. And there's no way to do it on...
In that case, if the instrument had measured it, and it was within compliance, and the resident still felt it was too loud, then the police department loses again, because we didn't do anything.
Well, no, I'm not saying she was, this person was not criticizing the police department, but I think that when we're... can't sleep because of noise, we're in business, then I think, you know, when we're talking about we're going to create more mixed use neighborhoods, when we start thinking about that, we really need to think about the long-term consequences of who gets affected by that. And so I just think it's real important that all of us, not just, not just that department, because every dealing I've had with that department, they've responded to all of my calls and they've dealt with it very effectively, and so I'm not criticizing, I just think that I need, I'm going to tell this person I brought it up, but I think we all need to think about that. And I wanted to find out about the instrument. I know you probably told me the same thing before, years ago, that I had forgotten.
Well, we had, we had quite, quite a conversation about it in previous commission meetings.
We did.
When we were deciding on...
We don't have any instruments.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's, it's based on, like you say, subjective...
Well, and I'm going to have a talk with the manager, the owner of that particular business, you know, just to say, you know, here's what the neighbors are complaining about, so you're going to get more business if you're entertaining your own, you know, patrons rather than people that aren't coming in.
Is that the one on our side of town?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, you know, it's like, but I just wanted to, to say that, I think we need to remember our residents, whether they're renters or owners or whatever, they are the people that allow those businesses to function. And then I had another thought on the animal thing that I wanted to bring up. Back to you, Rob Moore, when I said, they're getting, what, $3 more? There's some reason why we shouldn't increase it to 15 or $20, because if you're a pet owner, you're going to spend a lot of money on that pet and you love that pet. And if we increased it to $20, that would generate more for you guys, right?
If there were participation.
If there were what?
If there were participation.
Okay. Well, I would participate. How many people do you estimate have pets? I would say at least 50% of the residents in this, in the city limits, every, I know I go door to door and it seems like everybody's got one, some of them have bitten me, but if you think that...
Well, I don't think compliance is great, though. I had to say that, but it's not, it's not, it's not...
Well, if, if we're not going to do anything about compliance, then why have it at all?
Well, I think if, if the vets were more active, you know, I think that's a really good idea. It's that we have someone, somebody to help, help them be more active. You know, that would, that would increase compliance. I think if you put it, you want to be competitive, you know, with other surroundings, communities.
Okay.
I know, you know, for instance, we actually, our proposal, we use what license to charge these pet owners.
And that is?
And so I think if you go to...
And that is what?
That was actually $8, I think. But I, you know, the 10 is certainly a good suggestion, but I, I think if you go too much higher, then you start to maybe put it, maybe put it out of reach for, you know, for something. Rather see and put that money through the pen, honestly.
All right.
But I appreciate that.
I just wondered if that might help fill in that gap of $10,000. That was my thought, and so it's probably not a very good thought, but I put it out there anyway. Thought I had another piece of old business. And right now, I can't remember what it was, so if I remember later, I'll call you, Mr. Z.
You have your old business, you have your old assets, please. Oh, okay. So, Gary, you're, where are you? Since you haven't said anything tonight, the things you sent us for the, you know, when we, when you talked about the fact that people didn't pay their property maintenance code violations, it said to get a very low percentage, and you came up with options to maybe enhance payment, and it looked like you had them lettered A through G. Well, what is, which ones did you like? Think were the best?
I got my exterior lighting memo, building memo.
Yeah, the exterior one's a little longer, this is short. But you can lose mine if you want.
May I?
Yeah.
Oh, that's it. Thank you. The difficulty with this for me is the whole balance of business friendly versus not business friendly. But if you've got a delinquent tax on the books, and I think you, I think the city should seriously consider not issuing, signing our department not to issue business license, building permits, anything associated with that property until it's compliant first. Legally, I have to issue a building permit if it meets building code unless there's an ordinance that says something concretely. We don't have anything since then for that. The, that was a, I don't have a problem with any of these, actually. I don't know why we don't, my understanding, we don't put liens on property for minimum taxes. Delinquent, we don't put liens on property.
It's statutory lien automatically.
But after 10 years, it automatically goes away also?
11 years.
Does there a way to not make it automatically go away? I'm just...
On delinquent taxes.
We can ask later, but that was, I don't know if I put that in there, but that was when I was trying to get it in.
You did put something in about that on the second page.
But that was, because ours, in code enforcement world, they don't go away, they run with the lien. They stay forever. But that just, that was G. But I don't understand that one, that's all. I don't have a problem with any of them, I like all of them, honestly. I don't have a issue with any of them. I could enforce all of them.
So you think all, any of those, or all of those, or some of those would enhance the percentage of people that were paying?
A small percentage, yes. As far as our hourly, as far as minimum taxes, I would think would help, yes.
Okay.
I, I just know there's delinquent taxes out there, I don't know the percentage, I don't do that.
They tend to correlate highly with the same people that you all have challenges with.
That doesn't surprise me, which is sad.
Banded property, that kind of thing, they correlate high.
The number four, I do want to touch on, we do get complaints for historic properties that get code violations. Painting is the prime one. I do a sweep in December. I, killing paint 25% of a site of ability constitutes you're going to need a letter from us saying that a painter's structure. We don't send those out until April or May, because there's no point in sending it January or February, because...
It's a little cold.
Not the right weather. So in April or May, we send a letter. By ordinance, I give one 30-day extension.
A 30 days, but you know, if you sent it...
So they get a total of 60.
But if you sent it earlier, it could help them, like, for instance, if they've got a whole house to paint, like somebody I know, that didn't get enough, very much notice, so I spent three long weekends. So if you give, if you send it out as soon as you find it and tell them that you don't expect it to be done in February, but a date, they might have more notice to line it up.
Correct.
Especially if it's like 90% of something, you know?
That's accurate. By ordinance, I can give them 30 days plus one 30-day extension.
Right.
I can give them any more, once I send the violation letter. So it's been raised that maybe we might want to address that for historic properties.
Maybe we might want to give them, like if it's found in the winter, maybe we might want to give them, you know, 120-day notice so that you can send them out in December, January, if you find them. And then if you find them in July, then they still got their 120 days, but they know they got to start painting before November, December. You know what I'm saying, a longer notice. And then you could send them out as soon as you know and give people a little more notice. I don't know, it's a thought. Because aren't there some people...
It requires a code change, that's all I, I don't have a weird 30 days for everybody other than grants.
Well, like I know for me, like if I got a 30-day notice, I'm a really busy person and I was like, oh my gosh, what am I going to put on hold for the next like two weeks? So the longer the notice, the more, the better people can plan, I think.
We do, I did fail to say, we do now, as part of the Business Friendly Forum staff committee, our office sends courtesy letters to every violation.
Okay.
We have two weeks before we send an actual violation. It's, it's working, we're getting a lot more calls and asking, okay, I got this letter, they're actually asking about it, whereas prior, some would call, some would fix it and not call, and others would just throw it away, I think, because they were upset that they got a violation. But the courtesy letter, I think, is working. It does cost the city more money, but I think it is working. But that doesn't fix the historic property, at least for just continuing issue, but it's just an unrelated to fees that I threw in here. We have, July 1st, I did provide finance and PVA the official final abandoned property list, other than one owner who has appealed. And that list was finalized. So I will provide you all this week, the, those that are on it, I think I provided which ones were on last year, but I was going to do all the way from the very beginning, because there are probably a dozen, if not 20, that have been on every year. And if they were already delinquent, they're not paying the triple taxes, they're having effect on that. If they're disrepair and not occupied, that doesn't help the situation. But those are less than the other seven. I guess that's all I'll say on that. I was going to say, earlier, y'all commented about the historic properties and the, we're night and day, different planets are...
It looked like to me, it was me.
And on liens issues. The other option is if, and I was asked this in the hall last time, I was going to say, if the property maintenance board was strict and firm and held everyone strictly, and the art history board was fair but firm, and the commission supported both of those to be strong, and everyone knew that this is the way it is and we're actually going to do this, and there's no roundabouts, that would change the culture of all three of those, the citizens, the boards, and staff. Now, it's not, it's not that way.
Right.
It's very difficult to explain how one person is not contributing, another is contributing, why one person has violations, but they're not, they're okay not to have to ever fix it and get, you've got to fix yours.
Right.
Or go to the board, or go pay a fine, or don't do anything and you'll get triple taxed. And then nothing happens in that aspect, it's not getting your taxes anyway. It's, it's hard to make a lot of changes and it's hard to increase investment, in my opinion, and there's a lot of variation in the three wills and/or the acceptance levels. Staff is still treating everyone the same, still sending them off to their processes, which doesn't help the situation either, in reality, because we're trying to force up and it's not being really fully enforced for our current, for our, or it's being lenient, or it's being allowed to continuous state of unacceptance minimum status for the work. So with that in mind, that does, just keep that in mind, I think, and I don't know how to fix it. No matter what we adopt, if one board is real lenient, the other board is real strong, and they don't have the same support from the commissioner, and the commissioner is changing gears each time, that's going to change in reality, in my humble opinion. I don't mean to offend anyone, I just, I just don't know what to say.
Just set it.
And I'll give you a prime example if you want.
Sure, if you want to.
And there was a question about what can we do when we file with district court, but it's not scheduled with district court, and yet months go by while it's being scheduled? My knowledge, there's nothing we can do. Once we file, we got a way for that court hearing. I don't know if the city wants to look into, okay, we board unsecured structures, we board broken windows, homeowners don't board to make it secure. We cut your grants, that's where we stop. Zoos, does the city want to expand that service? Can we expand the service? Do we want to pick up trash? Do we want to off their property? Do we want to remove cars that are parked on the grass for too long?
How much is too long? I forgot.
Right now, it's 30 days.
Oh.
Unless it's for sale.
Somebody caught me the other day, a citizen's arrest, my car was parked on the lawn, only for two hours, but I got called on it.
If it's for sale, it's 30 days, and if it's not, it's 24 hours.
Okay.
Usually it means a couple of days.
Two hours is fine, right?
There's a lot of variables.
There sure are.
To make things better and worse, and why things stay the same.
I think, I think one of our problems was that we, on a lot of these issues, we've really never done anything to a great extent. In other words, there's always been a fear of foreclosure, because the fear was, if you push toward foreclosure, which I know Mr. Moore's looking at it through a cost-benefit analysis, but I think we have 49 properties that are ready to look at again from this thing, but, or however many that is. But I think the fear has always been for staff and everything else, is that if they push through that, that then when Susie Smith gets foreclosed on and calls three commissioners, they'll all say, well, no, don't do it. And then, then all that sort of happens. But I think, I think at the end of the day, you have to have sticks and you have to utilize those sticks, and perhaps that can help this process, because it doesn't look like we have sticks at many levels, that we use and we wait so long that it's, it's difficult. I think that, that's right.
Well, talking about the tax issue, that's separate from the property maintenance code liens. The property maintenance code liens, of course, are at the bottom of the, they're at the very bottom of the pyramid when it comes to enforcement of liens. If the property is sold at the courthouse steps and we've got a property maintenance code lien, then, you know, 99 times out of 100, we don't get paid a dollar, okay? And that's why, of course, why we enacted the nuisance code, because the nuisance code is now number two on the, on the list, right behind taxes.
So we are doing things.
So that's been proactive there. We also enacted the triple tax rate, and believe it or not, you know, that triple tax rate has resulted in a number of people paying their taxes, because they don't want to be on the triple tax rate, because it costs so much. So that's been effective as well. In terms of foreclosures, you know, we have filed some foreclosures, and the ones that we filed, I would say 80% of them, the people had come in and paid, which is good, but you do have to be very careful about which ones you foreclose on, because what happens is you incur the cost of foreclosure, which includes filing fee, advertisement fee, the master commisurate's fee, and then you get to the courthouse steps and the property's sold at the courthouse steps. And what would normally happen on some of these properties that are of no value is the city's going to have to buy them, if you want to get them back into the, into the inventory, so to speak, productive inventory. And then you'll go back to the process of selling them to whoever will buy them at a minimal price. So, you know, what might be helpful would be to come up with a, a cost figure on how much the city wants to spend on buying property that's been foreclosed on, on an annual basis. Because then that'll, that'll tell us what kind of investment the city wants to make in these properties that are not going to be purchased by third parties at the courthouse steps.
Because that goes along with the same idea of demolition. It's, it's similar, in the sense, which is you're trying to improve the housing stock and the inventory, use your word, you're trying to improve the inventory and how much you want to spend to improve that inventory.
I can add that back. Thanks, buddy. Well, old, um, well, related to that, I'm just going to ask this every three months and then just wait for three more months after today. Has anybody gotten any of those glossy plans on the old wives renovation?
Has anybody gotten any of those glossy plans on the old wives renovation? Does anybody know anything about it, besides that they go to court on August 6th, or whatever day that is?
Actually, I had, actually, I had a conversation today, and got a piece of information. But I probably oughta look that person share it.
But we've not gotten anything officially, any information?
August 6th is the Board of zoning adjustments appeal event.
That's right.
Not their appeal to our property maintenance code violations.
Just because I asked.
Right, and we're not doing anything to prosecute the case in District Court, because if you'll recall, the commission advised no.
I recall quite clearly.
Right, so, you know, I haven't called Ed Logan and said, Ed, we need to push this appeal, you know, they filed the appeal, and normally what you would do is you would file most, instead of briefing schedule, and then, you know, the parties would brief the issue, and then the court would issue its ruling, but I haven't made that call.
At the direction of the commission.
I'll ask again in October.
Do you know anything?
I've not had any conversations.
You did, like, several months back, though, with, like, for a plan, like a skill, like a timeframe thing?
Yes.
You got that, right?
I didn't receive anything. We had conversations, but I did not receive anything.
Okay.
That's it.
Any other old business?
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Let's do it.
So I moved a chairman in honor of Commissioner Hane's birthday?
I'll wait a second. Move by Commissioner Val, move by Commissioner Rush. All of us in favor, picking up a say or not, you see the guy, and those, like, say a five, seven.